With the balance funded by grants and other available funds. Item number one, roll call, please.
Counselor Arnone.
Here.
Counselor Bosco. Counselor Sacala.
Here.
Counselor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Denny.
Here.
Counselor Falk.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Muller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Here.
Counselor Engier. Here. There's ten members present, one is absent.
Item number two, the following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday, August 24, 2018. Just know we'll have to correct the notice. Town of Enfield Legal Notice, Public Hearing. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut on Tuesday, September 4, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed appropriation of the $84,373,0294 for the reconstruction and renovation of the John F. K. — John F. Kennedy School and to authorize the issuance of bonds, notes, or temporary notes in the amount not to exceed $27 million with the balance funded by grants and other available funds. The proposals are available for review in the office of the town manager, submitted by Suzanne Alnicki, Town Clerk, and it was dated July 23, 2018. Ground rules for the public hearing. A, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has one chance to speak, we shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, we shall permit those individuals desire a third, fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities. Suzanne, do we have a list of folks who would like to — or are we just going to — okay? So at this point, again, this public hearing is specific to the JFK renovation, and at this time, that's the only comment you can make is on the JFK. The regular council meeting will be at 7:00, and then if you have any other issues you'd like to talk about, public communications will be then. So would anyone like to speak for the JFK — on the JFK renovation? No, we already had the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah. Presentation's been provided back in, I think it was the first meeting in August. So this is the public hearings correctly run. Now it's up for you folks to go up and comment. Anyone like to comment? Mr. Copen. And I'll just, if you raise your hand, I'll just call on you. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Scott Copen, 9 Allen Street, right here in Enfield. I come before you this evening to speak in favor of the referendum in November and would ask you to move it forward to the voters. I have worked a bit with the JFK PAC that has formed and looking through all the information not only supplied by the town but also pulled together by the JFK PAC. I do think this is a project that the community has to support. And a bit of a history lesson for folks that you're all aware of. This town has — this town undertook a process to upgrade our public schools over many years. We had a very successful project, a signature project at Enfield High School. Unfortunately, last year, the voters didn't support JFK, but I thank you and the Board of Education for moving it forward and giving it another opportunity. We do have to improve JFK. It is essentially the same school that I went to back in the 1970s, and I think it is time for Enfield to say yes to JFK, and I ask you to move it forward to the voters in November.
Those dates were correct, 1970s?
It is. It was the late '70s.
I want to make sure for the record.
I almost brought my yearbook to prove it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ma'am. Just name and record for the — name and address for the record, excuse me.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Bridget Rider, and I live at 4 Misty Meadow Road here in Enfield, and I am fully supportive of the proposed referendum that would allow Enfield the opportunity to upgrade JFK Junior High School. I moved to Enfield with my family six years ago, following a job opportunity to join Cigna in Bloomfield, Connecticut. At the time, my colleagues, knowing that my husband and I have two young children, recommended that we look for housing in areas that have strong school systems close to the Bloomfield area. So school systems like West Hartford, Simsbury, Farmington. We did a lot of research. We toured a lot of towns, visited a lot of school systems, and we ultimately landed on Enfield because we thought we could get a great house for a great value. We really liked the community. And again, six years ago, at the time, we were really impressed with the proposed renovations to Enfield High School. So we thought we were going to get a great house and a great community, and our kids would get a great education and some state-of-the-art facilities. It's my belief that a strong educational ecosystem benefits not only our students but the broader community. So I absolutely support this. I urge my fellow residents to support the referendum as well, not only because our students absolutely deserve a safe, modern facility that encourages their learning, not distracts them with physical distractions, but because a strong school system benefits the broader community by raising property values, attracting businesses, which in turn attracts and retains residents who are actively engaged in our community. So I see this as an absolute win-win for our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Kelly.
Hi, Kelly Hamler, 10 Hartford Ave. I'll make it short and sweet because I have to get downstairs to Inlands and Wetlands. I am in favor of renovating JFK Middle School. It's a good investment for the community. I went to JFK for 7th, 8th, and 9th grade in the '70s, and other than the new library wing, very little has changed. When families decide to stay in Enfield or move to Enfield, the school system is a big deciding factor. More families living here equals more taxpayers, and that means less tax paid by individual families. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Welcome. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity. Guillermo Salazar, 18 Christopher Drive here in Enfield, and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal before you and moving this forward. I will try to be as brief as I can. I think, following up on the comments made by another resident before me, I don't have any school-age children anymore. My wife and I don't have any school-age children anymore. Our youngest one has moved on to college. But we see this, the referendum and the opportunity to renovate the school as a benefit to all of those that are residents of Enfield, not just people, but, you know, that have students that would be attending the school. In my hands, I'm holding a couple of research papers that I was able to find doing a very simple search on the Internet. One from Harvard and the other one from the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine. And you can find a plethora of these, just again, by doing a simple search, all of them speaking about the benefit in terms of the education that a new school building with modern facilities provides to the education of children. And again, even if you don't — if that's not the focus, just the education of children for those people like myself that no longer have school-age kids, the benefit is in the people that having good schools attracts to the community. And I am a — the head of a department for one of the largest employers here in town. I won't name them because I'm not here to speak for them, but one of the issues that we face when hiring people is always mostly we hire from out of town and from out of state many times, and one of the first questions they ask is if they've decided to take the job is in relocating, where are they going to live? And what is the quality of the schools in the community that they're planning to live in? Many times, unfortunately, Enfield is not at the top of the list, and so I hire a lot of people that come from out of state and they live in the neighboring towns. So there's a lot of benefits, and I urge anybody that's having second thoughts or that is questioning the benefit of it to go online and do some research. And obviously, it's not the magic key, the silver bullet, but it's a factor in providing good education and ultimately improving our, you know, values of our homes. So there's many significant benefits. I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Ma'am.
Hello. Ms. Caitlin Dunn, 3 Kennedy Drive. I'm here to read an email on behalf of Tina LeBinc, 22 David Street. As a resident and parent, I support the JFK referendum. Having had three kids go through JFK, the youngest most recently last year, JFK is in need of the renovation. I think as a parent, in my journey, what has helped me along to support this referendum and the JFK renovation is that the teachers and administration want to stay at JFK. They believe this building, the JFK building, is what is conducive to the middle school setting. I support this referendum and for the betterment and future of Enfield schools and the town as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Sarah.
Welcome.
Thank you. Sarah Hernandez, 128 Town Farm Road. I want to come before you today and say that I am absolutely in favor of bringing this to the ballot so that the citizens of Enfield have an opportunity to vote. As a person, as a citizen, not as a Board of Education member, the reason I actually came here is a little different, and I want to tell you why. I had a wonderful opportunity to work at Enfield Adult Day. I worked at the Feliciane. I worked at Mark Twain, and this is probably about five years ago. And one of the things that really impressed me was the way that Enfield cared for its older adults and its vulnerable populations. We need to provide for them, and having state-of-the-art school systems is an excellent way for us to generate tax revenue so that we don't have to cut — we don't have to reduce the services that we're providing to these populations. I also support our students. I think they are worth it. We have an amazing faculty. We have top-grade students, and we deserve the facilities to match.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Jack.
I brought a few notes. It's going to be a while.
We've only given you two minutes.
(laughing). Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. I'd like to take the opposite approach to the revenue going down in this town as it's been going down. There's 396 houses for sale in town right now. I told you last time, the raising of taxes, nobody's talking about what it's going to cost us in tax. We just had a tax increase. We're talking about increasing taxes in several other fronts, and now I'm saying that a yes vote means higher taxes. Enfield population projections by UConn are saying that we're down by 10% population, going to be down 10% by 2040. Repairs to the JFK were estimated at 13.9 million. Well, what we're doing is we're being so greedy that we want to drive that price up so that we qualify for more funding from grant money. Grant money is my other pocket. Everybody out here, anybody that's paying taxes, it's not free money. It's grant money. Are the taxes going to be higher? Of course. So the referendum, the last referendum, when it went up before us at 95 million, 62.9 million was anticipated reimbursement from the state. Anticipated? They didn't even pay us $350,000 for the senior tax breakers, circuit breaker thing. So where are they going to come up with this money? It's amazing. The state can't fund its current obligations, and I just wrote including the $350,000 for the circuit breaker. Moody's 25 towns negative outlooks said to the changes, which mean cities, towns may end up paying additional interest on borrowed money, given the uncertainty about municipal aid from the state. That's right in the Moody's report. The current budget impasse highlights the ongoing vulnerability of funding that the state of Connecticut provides to its local governments, Moody's wrote. Credit ratings for the following cities and towns are under review, and they list a whole bunch of towns, Ashford, Bolton, Bridgeport, Colchester, and Enfield. So a negative outlook, Moody's writes, will have a devastating impact on the nearly 60 communities subjecting each to a credit downgrade that will increase their property tax rates and limit their ability to fund municipal projects. That's in the Moody's report. Now, like I said, if you're talking about the amount of money that we've already — oh, and there's 396 houses for sale in Enfield this morning. Wonder why? I don't think we're attracting people. I think the fact that we had to raise taxes and mill rates is because property values went down. Why'd they go down? Because we're overspending. I think anybody up there that would run their household this way and go out and mortgage to the hilt is going to fail, and that's what we're doing. We're causing the town to be in a position that they shouldn't be in. And people say it's nice, you know, don't get me wrong, I think it's nice, too, but at what cost? So I — well, I can get into the PCB evaluation and what they said about the PCB evaluation, and it says right clearly in the report that there is no real control. The state doesn't mandate any controls for PCBs and that the only controls that are there are for the disposal once you disturb it. So if we didn't disturb it, then we don't have a problem. Now, whatever we disturb, yeah, then you have to take care of it. So that makes that another issue. More of that report is talking about asbestos than PCBs. But you know, that brings to mind another thing. PCBs, even in that report, says that the amount of PCBs that they could get, the highest amount that they got out of JFK, was about a third of what you would get from eating one striped bass from the Long Island Sound. On the other hand, we now have — how many inoculations do we have our kids have before they can go into school nowadays? 16? And that's Tamarosol. Tamarosol's mercury, in case you didn't know. Where is it made? China. China can't make dog food without poisoning our dogs, and we're accepting Tamarosol in inoculations, and we're not worried about that. We're not talking about that at all. We're talking about PCBs that cause eye irritation above some, I forget the number now, 439. So I think the people, the more the people educate themselves on what's really happening and why we're spending that kind of money, the less likely, I hope, that they'll vote yes on this thing. My contention is that in order to keep people in their place, we've got to vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Yep.
Good evening. My name's William St. George. I live at 29 Gannon Terrace. I'm on the Commission on Aging and also on the Cable Advisory Board, and — but I'm here — everything I say here is my own opinion. I'm also kind of a gloom and doom guy and like the previous speaker, but I have a different analysis, economic analysis outcome. Our country and the world has changed a lot since the '50s, '60s, '70s, and in terms of population forecast for the state as well as our town, it's an aging population. And what we're looking at is a change in the tax base, where we're having — we're going to be having more and more retired folk instead of working families supporting the tax base. And the one most important thing you can do to change that is to upgrade and maintain a good education system. Unfortunately, the last referendum did not pass, and that would have, I think, improved the JFK. This particular referendum, I think, is, we've got to do it. It's a minimum. And I salute the council here for their hard work in bringing a solution to the community. So I really, I'm urging people of all ages and family, household situations to turn out and vote yes on this referendum. About, let's see, the gloom and doom, I — I think that the, in terms of the socioeconomic trajectory of the state and of this town in particular, I'm very concerned. I think that suburbia has the potential —
Folks, we — sorry, sir. Can we keep our conversations in the eyes at a minimum, please? Let's show folks who are speaking some respect. Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I think that suburbia has the potential to be the inner city of tomorrow. Now, what do you think of when you think of the inner city? Think of up-to-down staircase, okay? You have students that are demoralized. You have teachers that are struggling with their resources. You have rundown buildings. And if you vote no for this, that's what you're voting for. You're voting for a much poorer community. You know, I benefited myself, this is my hometown, I benefited from the decisions of prior voters to build up this town, the education system and all our resources. And I think it would be a shame if — I think people need to wake up and realize that it's their duty to continue that tradition. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
Let me just get that out of there. Good evening. Chris Rutledge, 7 Victory Street. Let me just start by saying that my comments this evening are not as a member of the Board of Education and should not be taken to represent or imply the sentiments of that board. They are strictly the opinions of a private citizen. So for the matter at hand, should this go on the ballot this November? Absolutely, if for no other reason than our town charter mandates that we put issues like this to a public for a referendum. A lot of people have already spoken about what they like about the project, what they don't like about the project, not to rehash that. Just want to go over some of the arguments that I've heard about this over the last, I'd say, about two years. So just like last year, this is likely to be a, probably a close vote. And there's still a lot of people out there who think that the annex should have been the middle school. To this date, unfortunately, I've made the mistake of characterizing those opinions as nothing more than loyalty to a particular building, and I think I may have been a little bit in error there, but for, with a little bit of a caveat. We love to perform studies in this town, and I've said this to people before when I was chair of the pre-ref committee and to some people up on the council today, that given that what we've done with JFK, perhaps the annex deserved the same attention to try and convince some of these folks that, with an apples-to-apples comparison, that the use of JFK would be a better option. I mean, frankly, that comes down to vote counting and return on investment. You know, would we really be unwilling to spend 30 grand to do another rendering of the annex? And if it convinced some people that that really was the better building than JFK, you'd be spending 30,000 to take up 60 million. To me, that seems a little bit like a no-brainer, but I think we're a little bit beyond that. So as for some of the other arguments I've heard over the last two years, there have been some that have suggested we eliminate the middle school, combine these children to elementary and the high school, which I think the most eloquent response I can think of that is, really? Just doesn't make a lot of sense. There are some that say, I don't have kids in the school, and I don't want to have to pay the money for this. To those, I would pretty much remind you of how your school was paid for, how your kid's school was paid for, how your grandkid's school was paid for, and realize that as a community, it's our responsibility. Some have criticized the project over what they call maintenance issues, kind of ignoring the fact that the building's 50 years old. I don't know a car or a house or anything that can't, doesn't need major structural renovation after 50 years. I'm sorry, it just doesn't happen, no matter how well you maintain things, eventually a system is going to come to its end of its useful life. And then there's cost. Yeah, we're talking about an $85 million price tag, of which we're, if this passes, we're going to get 60 million. To me, that's a pretty good discount. And frankly, given that this is going to come from bonding money from the state and our tax dollars go to pay for that, frankly, I'd also much rather see that money come right here to Enfield than go to, you know, another, go to bailout Hartford schools or New Haven or other towns that are pretty much bankrupt at this point. So I know other people probably want to talk here, so I'll just wrap up by saying that I definitely think a yes vote is the right way to go. I do have concerns that a lot of data wasn't put out there over the building choice, as I said before, but I do still think with the data at hand that choosing JFK and voting yes on this referendum will bring people to this town, will bring families to this town, will improve the school system, and, you know, as I said, despite the lack of data in certain regards, I think voting yes is still the best option for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Welcome.
Hello. Thanks. My name is Mike Gorley. I live at 27 Monroe Road and here in Enfield, and I wanted to share my story of Enfield with you guys. But before I got into that, I realized that Jack and I are actually neighbors living in the presidential section, but I did want to respond to some of his comments because some of the information he presented was either inaccurate or incomplete, so I thought the record should show that while there has been estimates to improve JFK in the past, those estimates only fix some of the critical ADA-compliant restrictions on the school, but all in the money just to get JFK up to code and ADA-compliant would cost just as much, if not more, as what we're proposing with the referendum. And with a referendum, you get a brand-new school. And one thing that I personally like about the way that we're trying to raise funds for this, the town, is that the grant money that we get from the state of Connecticut, as the last speaker said, you know, can help benefit Enfield and not the other towns around, but it's money that Enfield doesn't have to repay. So from a return-on-investment perspective, and I've worked in finance my whole career, this is a great investment. But I'm not here to talk through numbers tonight, more so share the story of a resident and a parent. So I've lived in Enfield for 15 years. I have two kids in the school system now, but I moved here before I had kids. I — oh, by the way, I'm definitely a yes supporter of the referendum. Over the past 15 years, and especially since my kids have started to grow up, I volunteered extensively in the town through coaching, through the rec programs in both basketball and soccer. Through that time, I've coached hundreds of kids, and I've gotten to speak with them and their parents, and I hear the stories and I ask them, you know, how's their experience been with the Enfield school system because my kids were going into it? And I consistently hear good things about the teachers in Enfield and the school system overall. But what I do also continue to hear is not-great stories about the JFK facility, people worried about the PCBs and sending their kids to school in a questionably safe environment or sending — their kids have to go to school in a trailer, and I don't want to have to send my kids to school in a trailer. But the other thing that struck me as I talk with many parents throughout town is that when their kids go through high school, they have a much different story to tell. And they tell about how great the renovated high school has been and how the art program is fantastic there, the facilities in general are, make for a great experience. And I hear it not only from the parents, but I hear it from the high school kids as well. One of my friend's daughter, Rachel, is going to be a junior this year, and she hasn't — she has so many great things to say about what the improvements to the high school have done for her educational experience, and I really think that we can affect that same positive impact for all of the kids that go through school because they all funnel through JFK. So we really have an opportunity to make an investment that will benefit our community and also every child that goes through our school system. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Ma'am.
Welcome.
Good evening. Bethany Olet, 24 Betty Road. I'm here to speak in favor of putting this proposal to referendum. I believe we need to invest in our school and in — Good evening, Bethany Olet, 24 Betty Road. I'm here to speak in favor of putting this proposal to referendum. I believe we need to invest in our school and in our buildings for our students as well as our taxpayers. It's the right thing to do financially for our town. We will bring in more families with investing in our school. The school will provide for programs like our robotics and our other STEAM programs. It's going to provide a better layout for safety. And as well, it's a good layout now for, compared to like Fermi with the straight corridors and deterring fights and things like that, but from a overall standpoint of safety and being able to isolate the public areas from the student areas, I think is really important as we see every day. But just as an overall for our town, it helps with our property values, it's going to help bring in families and skilled workers, which brings in businesses, which really just benefits us overall. So I think it's just the right thing to do, and I'm definitely voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Sir. You had your hand up, right? Sorry, I didn't recognize, welcome, thank you, sorry.
Vinnie Westley, 12 Dear Run. I'm, as everybody else inside this room, in favor of renovating JFK. I'm just not a big fan of, of what we've done to this new, this new revision of what the previous committee did. I thought the previous committee came up with a pretty good design, it was a little on the expensive side, but it was a good design that we probably just needed to modify a little bit in order to get approval. But what we seemed to do was, we seemed to start from scratch and then try to fit every possible space we can into the same footprint that we currently have with a few additions. And I tried to make sense of this information that was online and, and the pamphlet to try to figure out, you know, where we're getting all our space from, and what we're doing in the space from. So I came up with a nice little spreadsheet to try to figure it all out. And it looked to be most of it of a cut-and-paste exercise from Silver and Petronella supplied us, and then trying to make it match with a few modifications to what we have now. But what it come down to is that the big things were, you eliminated the pool, which was your, most of your gain in your square footage, you cut a lot of square footage out of storage, and then we didn't expand the gymnasium and all. And a couple of those things, and I'll just touch on the gymnasium first, that was one of the areas where they expressed they wanted extra space, and it doesn't appear that we're even increasing that space at all. And it's, it's puzzling that the documentation says that you're expanding the gymnasium, but the picture doesn't show that you're expanding the gymnasium, so I can't figure out if we're expanding it or not expanding it by some of the information we got. Also, we're getting rid of the pool, and this is a big concern for me, because on the last committee, we had a lot of discussions about the pool. And in fact, in the first revisions of the plan that we had, we approved that the pool we removed and we used that space for other, other things. And then we had an explanation from the director of recreation, or assistant director of recreation, I don't remember his exact title, but she came in and spoke to us and said, but the value of the pool is for a community. And not only is JFK a school building, but it's also a community building that's going to be shared by the community and used by the community. And this is one area I thought where we have a big miss right now. And I know that the pool is not going to be used for educational reasons, but it is a community use. And there was a lot of strong input from her as far as why we should keep the pool and why it was still needed in our community. And I still feel that's, that's a big valid point. There's a reason why we don't have a school in the high, a pool in the high school, because it's real expensive. We got rid of the Green Manor Pool, we're never going to be able to afford to put another public pool outside anymore, because it's too expensive. But I think we're being a little short-sighted by getting rid of the pool now, just so that we can squeeze out four thousand or five thousand square feet to cram a cafeteria in it, so that we could use the cafeteria to cram a lot of other things into that area there. So, I'm in favor of fixing JFK, if that's the building we choose. As you know, I still don't feel we're using the right building, we've got a perfectly good building on the other side of town with, that's called the annex now, that would probably be perfectly suited for this, but for some reason, we can't look into it. But since we decided on JFK, let's do it right. And I don't think this is doing it right. It looks like we're going to have a shiny new eighty-four million dollar building that's cramped and too small. And at the end of the day, I just don't think we're giving, we're doing justice. And unfortunately, we're going to go to referendum with this one, and this is really not the one we should be going referendum with. We should be going to referendum again with, with something like this or a modified version of it, which there was four other, four other modifications of that same building, just had different square footage. So, I'm in favor of fixing JFK, I'm just not in favor of doing it this way. So, my vote will be a no on this referendum unless we come up with some different changes to how we're going to renovate the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jennifer, oh, sorry. Jennifer Ryan, 116 Sheridan Road. So I'm not, I apologize, up to speed on the actual specifics of the new proposal, but I will say that I helped with all of the Facebook postings of the PAC from the last referendum, so as you can imagine, I am for doing something to the middle school. But I feel it's time for us to grow as a community. Setting our students up for success begins with education. Modern classrooms and state-of-the-art technology is a long-term investment in the community. I did not grow up in Enfield, so I have no emotional attachments to Fermi or to JFK. For this to pass, the emotion needs to be set aside, and we need to let JFK go. Or, sorry, we need to let Fermi go. We need to rebrand Fermi with the voters. Many believe it still sits vacant. As a sports parent, we spend a lot of time in Fermi. There's a lot of sports, there's adult education, there's continuing things happening, it's now being rented out for special events, which is now a revenue stream. We just have to let that go. The annex is what it is, and it's not going to change back to a school. We need to go for the better of the town values, education and business prospects. And I just want to leave with anyone that has any desire to vote against making some changes now for the better of our kids. My daughter just started JFK this afternoon, she came home with a letter that says, Dear Parents of White House Students, this morning, we received a call from the environmental engineer working on the PCB project at JFK. The abatement was completed, completed over the summer, but as part of the remediation plan, wipe and air samples have been consistently taken to ensure that levels do not exceed appropriate amounts. One classroom in White Wing came back with an elevated level of an air test. Although the over thirty wipe samples were clean, the students and teachers were moved into the library for the next two days and will be in the innovation lab until we are certain there is no longer an elevated level. Something needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the first time? Randy.
Good evening, I'm Randy Dagel. I'm at 6 Red Wing Road. I am in favor of the JFK renovations. Couple of areas I'd like to touch upon, just clarifying some of the previous speakers and some information that should get out there. There were some questions regarding the cost of the bonds, taxes are going to go up and how much it's, they're going to go up. The estimated bond costs, when the building is renovated and done, will start around 2021, and the estimated bond cost per year will be two dollars and forty-five cents, roughly. At the end of the bond, in 2027, it should be in the range of seventy-four dollars, seventeen cents, in that range. That's 2027. So, we can collect cans and pay for this school, for our children. We're going to have a state-of-the-art facility that our children in our town deserves if this passes. The previous referendum was ninety-six million. Based on the redesigning of the building, we were able to get it down to now eighty-four million in that range. If we were to do just the code and maintenance requirement to the building, that'd be electrical, ADA requirements, not renovating the classrooms, not painting them, not putting new ceiling tiles, not air conditioning, not flooring, we're looking at close to twenty-seven to twenty-nine million. Majority of that will not be reimbursable, so that is going to be 100% taxpayers, and we're not getting, we're going to have a Band-Aid building again. The referendum reimbursement rate is seventy-point-seven-one percent, that's locked in. Right now, the PCBs, as the previous speaker said, are being removed, but they're being removed in phases. Every year, we're going to be doing some more. I believe that's at a tune of, if I'm not mistaken, eight, eight million dollars in that range, all taxpayers. All the PCB removal will be part of this renovation, which would mean it'd be reimbursable. Regarding the layout, the previous Silver Petroselli layout left all the classroom walls exactly where they were and modified some of the room layouts and locations. So they had to add additional square footage. This time around, what we did is we removed some interior walls to make classrooms larger and more suitable to become clabs, classrooms and labs, not just desks that can't be moved. This is what was done at the high school, and as you heard from other speakers, it's just a tremendous teaching environment. It's also, education-wise, we're going to provide a new auditorium in the back. New gymnasium's going to be tilted and modified, so yes, it is going to be expanded space-wise. It also is going to give us a band room, dressing rooms, bathrooms, and the luxury of having everything in the back is that we can invite the public to a sporting event, to a concert, there's a concession stand going to be proposed there, there's bathrooms, we could lock the rest of the building down. Right now, when there's a, anything at the auditorium, the custodians have to walk every floor and go in every room to make sure at the end of the night, nobody's wandering around. They're acting as security guards. God forbid they confront somebody. Right, if it's proposed and it wins, it's locked down. You have, just like the high school, you have an area where the public can be invited to, people can rent the auditorium, we're going to have six hundred seats available, not, right now, I think we have a capacity of three hundred and twelve, and actually two hundred and fourteen are usable right now. The bus loop's going to be totally changed. Right now, you drop your, your child off, you have to cross the bus line to get to where you parked to have your child enter the building. The proposed one has a loop, will be completely separate from the public parking. At no point will the two cross over, it's a heck of a lot safer. All the fields now, proposed ones, will be turned and all ADA acceptable. There's going to be ramps down to all the fields, seniors won't have issues falling down the hill, not being able to go down there because the banks are too steep, if it's raining, they can't walk down there, they can't get their walkers, they can't make it down there. Everything's going to be AD compliant. By keeping the pool, and this was a big discussion, we looked at all the drawings before when we did this new one, by keeping the pool, unfortunately, it'd be about close to two million dollars, one-point-eight-five million. To renovate it, update it and modify it, zero reimbursable, because it is a maintenance issue that should have been done. So unfortunately, it's just additional funds that would have to come out of taxpayers by keeping the pool. By utilizing what we did, changing it around and eliminating the pool, the pool, the building itself is classified as education facility, not a recreational facility. So that's why we took it as 100%, every footprint is education, not recreational. Also, one benefit, as they're going to be experiencing this week, it's going to be 100% air-conditioned. By doing the twenty-seven-plus million dollars to fix it, you're not, you're not air-conditioning this building, you're fixing it. We have a boiler plant right now on an eighteen-wheeler, on the bed of an eighteen-wheeler. I'm not sure what it's costing us per month, but it's got to be a couple hundred thousand over several periods, so that's not how you have a school. It's not safe, it's not energy-efficient, and if this doesn't pass, you're waiting a whole other year to bring it back to the table. So, I am all in favor for this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Rich?
Hello, friends, neighbors, Rich Renier, 206 Abbey Road, Enfield, Connecticut. So I'm in favor of the referendum to go through. I was a fan of the referendum last time, except I was a big advocate saying that it was too much money. This time, it's a lot less, so I'd be hypocritical to say I'm not for it. I looked at the plans, I looked at everything that was done, and I think it's one of the most wonderful things that have been put forth to go on a referendum. I think it'd be a great democratic process for the, that's how I'm counsel, to put it forward, for the voters to vote on it, because at the end of the day, it's everyone in town who decides what goes up and what goes down. Me, as an individual vote, I get one vote, and that vote will be yes in regards to the referendum. Heard some interesting statistics tonight. The first statistic was that we actually have three hundred-plus homes in town that are moving ready once this referendum passes. So I do believe that going forward, we can fill those homes. In Dade County, there was a new construction being done down in Florida a couple of years ago, and one of the big contentions in regards to what the referendums look like down there was, can we afford to build new schools? Number one, we don't have people coming in, number two, the cost just exceeds anything that we have. Well, they did some studies, like Enfield, they like studies, and what came forward from those studies, and it was pretty, pretty unanimous from all the studies, was that if you build it, they will come. If you build a sound facility for education, people will move into the town. We have to believe the fact that we have more surrounding opportunities around us than there's just Enfield. We have the new casino down in Springfield, we have new opportunities coming out in Windsor with Amazon, we have a multitude of things. So we can really make our town that much of a gem moving forward. We have credited so much to our educational system here in the town, and I think moving forward, it would, it would really be disheartening to put forward a middle school that every time I walk into, I remember blue pants and a great t-shirt for Jim. And every time I walk into that building, it feels about the same. I'm about to have a hero on Fridays of pizzas, and the building needs an update. And with that being said, there are statistical data out there in regards to the educational platforms and the environment in which we learn. Number one, a nice environment leads to a more productive environment in regards to education and learning. That is true in so many levels, just think about where you work now and where you would like to work in the future. It's a wonderful thing, the fact that we have a great website right now dedicated to what the project's going to look like, so if and when this gets passed on to the voters, they will have a wonderful opportunity to look at the pictures, ask the questions, which they should do, and kind of put forth with the, knowing that a school referendum is going to raise some money. It is. You can't just build something for free, which you could, but you can't. But at a low-cost point in which is going forward, and to pass the referendum and for you all to put together a wonderful building committee to make sure that those dollars are staying on track, if not under budget, like the Enfield High School project was, I think as a town would solidify the fact that we have come a long, long way. No matter your political affiliation, no matter your, your street address, I think this is a middle school that we can all stand behind and be proud of. So thank you guys for having this hearing this evening, and I thank you guys for staying here after I leave to my football draft. So thank you guys so much, have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Anyone else for the first time? Scott Ryder.
Scott Ryder, Four Misty Meadow. Somebody else that lives in Four Misty Meadow stole some of my thunder earlier this evening. But first, I just wanted to thank each of the town council members and the town manager and his staff for this public hearing opportunity, and for all citizens for or against this, but to get a chance to speak to this topic tonight. I also need to qualify my statement with, I'm not speaking for any hat that I may wear in town, but only for myself as a citizen and as my role as a parent. So as Mrs. Ryder mentioned earlier today, in 2012, we were excited for opportunity to move here to Connecticut for a job opportunity she had in Bloomfield. We knew three things. One, we wanted to live north of Bloomfield, closer to I-90, to visit our family who live in upstate New York. Two, moving for the first time in our lives with children, almost one and four years old at the time, we wanted to live in a great community, which we've been lucky enough to find here in Enfield. So thank you. Third, and most relevant to this evening, we wanted an area with good schools. Now, reading that there was a new, modern high school being proposed in the same months we were here househunting, and reading that the majority of the town's residents and its elected officials, shocker, all appeared to be for this, to be for this, that helped tip our scales. This appears to be the case again this time around. This doesn't seem to be a red plan or a blue, blue plan, but an Enfield plan. Not one party's version of what that should be. This could be one of the few things that the majority of us will agree on again until after November 6th. Good schools bring in families who purchase homes here, raise their families here and pay their taxes here and support their community. I know some scoff at that notion, I've heard it tonight, but it is true, good schools do bring in good families. Enfield met our family in 2012, and in 2013, when- Enfield met our family in 2012, and in 2013, when we started kindergarten, I began to volunteer in our schools. I haven't stopped yet. My volunteer hours only seem to increase, and it's not just me. My wife also started a team building and running club through Girls on the Run at Eli Whitney, where she's coached now for the last few school years. There are more good families out there, and a major factor in attracting them to grow and live here in a good, safe, modern school, are good, safe, modern schools. Our middle school is not that. But I believe it should be, and I believe it can be, and I would hope that the town council later this evening will put this question of referendum to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? Sir?
Welcome. So for the record, Tony Swanger, 30 Gannon Terrace, and I would ask that the, I guess the easiest thing to say is that I am in favor of asking you as the board to town council to bring it to the referendum, to the voters, to give us a chance to voice our votes. I am absolutely in favor of the referendum. I speak as a parent. I've actually been volunteering at JFK. My daughter was a student at JFK last year for the first time, and so this year, she's in 7th grade, so now she's a veteran, and so she knows all the hallways and all the rooms, and she knows where to go for everything. But she was in the 6th grade band last year, and I got suckered into being the 6th grade coordinator for the band students last year, and I'm sure when we have our first band meeting, I'll probably be voluntold that I'm doing it again this year. But I absolutely love the teachers, the environment, the community there at JFK. My main reason for coming tonight is because I've heard a lot of discussion, forums and different things like that, for reasons for or against this referendum. Issues that people have last year, you know, from the, you know, the past, you know, decisions by town council or board of ed, you know, about one school or another school or whatever. A lot of discussion on, you know, maintenance and things like that. And one of the things that I just want to thank each of you about, and I'm not sure who's on it, to be honest with you, is there's a joint facilities committee that has been working with our town buildings, with our schools, to make sure that things have, for lack of a better term, changed from that past viewpoint that none of our buildings are maintained. You know, our buildings are being maintained. But the problem is, is that any building, and JFK would be one of them, it's like, you know, after so many years, it's going to fall apart. You know, my house, 25-year-old roof, it needs to be replaced. And so the idea is that, you know, when we have a building like JFK, I want to say this. When we first moved to Enfield, some of this was said already, we were looking at schools as well. We were one of those families with a four-, five-year-old, four-year-old daughter when we bought the house in Enfield. So we moved here eight years ago. And when we were looking at the school system, we loved the fact that the school system had just been streamlined, that there was so many, you know, I think it was like four or three elementary schools and primary, going to three secondary elementary schools, to one middle school, and then they were talking about the combining of the high schools going to one high school. That structure that was set up said to me that there's responsibility here as a town to make sure that education is a priority. But it was also said to me, this idea that, you know, students have to survive JFK. And I have seen it over and over and over again, people saying, well, my kid survived JFK, so you know what, your kid can deal without AC2, or your kid can deal without this renovation, or your kid can deal without that, because my kid, I survived JFK, and apparently, we've met some tonight here that went to JFK back in the 70s. But the idea is that, why is it that we're asking any student to survive school? Like, I want my daughter to thrive there, not survive. And so it's one of those thoughts that I have in my head, is that I will be voting for the referendum, because I want my daughter to thrive in her education, not just survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time like to speak for the council? Is it on, Bob?
Yeah, somebody turned it off. Leave it on. I'm against the $85 million, I was against the $95 million renovation. People don't realize, in 2015, previous council asked an assessment of all the town buildings. What do it cost to renovate all the buildings, all the facilities, parking lots, the total package of everything? Town Hall, JFK, Fermi was included, the Dog Pound, Public Safety Complex, everything that the town owns. And this is a complete renovation of everything. New AC units, especially in JFK, because that has AC. Rehabbing of the pool, doing all the parking lots, the sports fields at all the schools. The exception was Enfield. We're spending, we're going for $85 million for one building out of the 28. The total number that this engineering firm come up with to do everything was $101 million. So for $20 million more, we get all 28 facilities done over completely. This is more than the rehab. This is all new ceiling tiles, new flooring, new windows, new doors, complete package. Everything is replaced, even these drapes will be replaced. So I don't know where we're going, why we're spending a Taj Mahal-type of building, which we don't need. These, in the last 10 years, the school enrollment has dropped over 1,000. It's going to drop another 500. These are, this is from a reliable demographic study by Dr. Prado, who's been doing the demographics since 1970, and he has a 99% rate that he's been accurate, within 99%. The other companies that come in, they're within 10%. There will not be 1,200 students in JFK in 2025. There'll be less than 1,000. Now, I'm just going to go over a couple things here. What's going to be done in JFK? For the $15,000, or $15 million, Fermi was going to be 30 million in this package. You're going to get all new windows, new roofs. The exterior shell is going to be completely done over. New siding. Inside, you're going to have all new ceilings, coastal ceilings throughout, all new doors, new carpets, wherever there's carpets. New floors, new furniture throughout the whole school in JFK. You're going to get all brand-new furniture. The walls and the partitions are all going to be done over. Building, heating and air conditioning, all cabinet heaters, unit ventilators are all going to be replaced. All new controls, distribution, all the electrical system is going to be done over completely. You're going to have new boilers, all new lighting, all new plumbing. Certainly, this other project, they're not going to jackhammer the floor and put all new underground pipes in. That's not going to happen, even with this $85 million plan. You're going to have the grounds completely done over, all the sports field, all the parking lots, all the roadways. All the roofs and everything are going to be done over. It's going to be ADA compliant. They're going to do all the ADA compliance in this package. All the building safety items are going to be done over. So it's a complete package for $15 million. How did it grow to $85 million? It's exactly the same thing. This was done for $15 million. The whole town could be done over for $101 million. Why has not this council acted on this other package that was done by an engineering firm? We seem to be spending a lot more money than we need to spend. I'm for renovating all these buildings in JFK, but not for $85 million. Now, just to realize, what's happened in one year? In 2014, our debt service was $3,500,000. The following year, it was $5 million, our debt service. A million and a half dollars increased in one year. Why are we at this mil rate that we should be at 22 mils, we're 10 mils, 10 to 15 mils higher? With this new package, they're not telling you what the mil rate's going to be, they're talking dollars and cents. We're talking a 27-year payback plus debt service, which is not included in these numbers. So why don't we get the real facts? We've got a lot of opinions tonight, and they're good opinions, but we have to have facts to make a decision. And the facts show that this is not a viable solution for JFK. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else for the first time, sir? For the first time before we get to the second time?
Welcome, sir. To Neville 25 Jewell Street. I'm here as a citizen, but it's hard to take off my other hats, and I have to be full transparent.
Director, which hat are you wearing?
Parent, parent and citizen right now. But the fact that I'm on the joint facilities committee, and we have a great crew that are on there, it's really hard to take off all the stuff that we learned as we went through the 2015 report and went through all of the reports that Donna and I had plans for, and went through all the roofs and stuff like that. I think I'm here basically to say thank you to you guys for all the good stuff that's happened to my kids. I had four kids go through the school, and they had wonderful educations. And they were back in the early 70s with Scott, okay? And I can attest, because I was there as well. And I spent 30, 35 of my 38 years at JFK. I watched it evolve, it's been a very, very good school. It's one of the few middle schools that I've been in where form fits function. It works. We set up for a team program, and it actually works the way it is. And when we approached this program through joint facilities, we were looking to make it better, okay? It was a 50-year-old building, I don't know about you guys, my house is 55 years old, I put two boilers in, two roofs on, you know, new windows, new doors, because I love this town and I'm staying here. But we have to do the same for our facilities. And I think the people on the joint facilities committee will attest to that, we're looking at all the facilities, as some of the speakers have talked about before, we have a need to assess our facilities. I think we're coming before you guys in not-too-distant future to talk about that, and to talk about how we can put a plan together that will ultimately make it predictable for the taxpayers as well as for everybody else, and us, the ones who are charged to do this. And I think we're looking to say, we don't want to have five roofs come do it one time. What we want to do is have a plan to do that. We want to have a plan to also bring our schools up to date. You know, JFK is almost 50 years old, you know, it needs new boilers. I mean, I think we have to look at it and say, we know that a 50-year-old building has single-pane windows, it has no insulation, it has a 50-year-old furnace, no matter how well-kept up it is, it needs to be redone. So I think it's time to do that. And one of the pleasures I've had in being on the board was I was able to be on the Enfield High School Building Committee for five years out of the six years that it's been going, and to watch that building evolve and grow to something that the whole community, I think, is proud of. I've talked to numbers of students. Every time you go up the top of that hill and you look down out there, and you see the kids, or you go out in the fields, and you see the kids coming down for graduation, it's something that really makes you proud, and that's what we're looking for. So I'm here in favor of this, of putting this on the ballot for the town to look at. It's time, we've put a lot of effort into this. I think it's a good design, I think it's, our goals were to make it meet the middle school academic athletic needs for both the school and the community, to have it be a good community center for this community, something that we can be proud of and that's functional. So I think, you know, a reason to come out and say, it's time, with all the work that we've done, and for the, you know, to get a manageable cost, and I think to maximize the reimbursement rate, which to me is incredible at almost 71%, and get something that we can all be proud of in this community. Okay? We've talked about it for a long time, it's time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council for the first time?
Hi, Charlotte Riley, 55, John Dodd Drive. I share a lot of the same hats that Mr. Neville shares, and it's hard to follow up on a key principle from that school, but I do want to say that this time, I am in favor of the referendum, and I say that because, for two reasons. To fix the building is going to cost more than what our portion is going to end up being after the state gives us our reimbursement rate. And the second reason is because the facilities committee is getting ready to crack the books open and make a plan for all the buildings in town, school and town buildings. And that's an important, key piece to this, because we'll be able to have a plan on how to put on a rotating schedule, on how to fix and repair things as they come up, and not have everything do at the same point in time, and we're stuck with a big bill. So I think this is a great idea, and I hope that you guys decide to vote on it tonight, to put it out to the voters, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So if we move to, for folks who want to speak a second, I just asked it, please bring something new at your second, your second time up to the mic, and not just rehash what you just said in the essence of time, but everyone's allowed to speak, but please bring something new. So we'll move on to the second. Chris, you've been patient.
Chris Rutledge from 7 Victory Street, actually speaking on behalf of someone else. Good evening, my name is Mary Ann Turner. I know I look a lot different in person, and I apologize for not being here in person this evening, but I believe the JFK question is so important to Enfield, I wanted to be sure to add my comments into the record. My husband, Ed, and I have lived in Enfield, sorry, Liz. My husband, Ed, and I have lived in Enfield since 1979, and though we do not have any children and have never participated in any school activities, we believe a quality school system is essential to all residents and to Enfield at large. We are very excited about the renovate-to-new high school, and believe the renovate-to-new for our middle school will only keep Enfield on track of a vibrant and growing community. The benefit to performing this upgrade supports all of us, not just the kids. Our school's curriculum can continue to grow with time, and our STEAM program can be the envy of many surrounding towns. Before you hear, you are just taking money from my other pocket, please know that my husband and I believe our tax dollars in Enfield are well-spent, and our services are very good, and if the state of Connecticut is going to allow Enfield the opportunity for a reimbursement level of 71%, I would much rather my other, or I'm sorry, I would much rather my other pocket cash, along with all the taxpayers of Connecticut, comes back to our town and our children. I ask you this evening to support the renovate-to-new JFK and give us another world-class school for Enfield's children and our community, as together it will keep Enfield growing well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the second time?
Randy Dagel, 6 Red Wing Road. One thing I'd like to just bring up that really makes a difference to the public is when we were on, when I was on the Enfield High School Billing Committee, and we went to the pre-ref, it wasn't a political decision, it was what was right for the kids and for the town, and it was a unanimous vote from the council members. That meant a lot to the voters, and that meant a lot to people that were considering moving in here. It was not a R or a D. Everybody's ambition, everybody's objective was what was doing right for the kids. If this does pass, I would like, it would be great to see that everybody overwhelmingly supports it, opposed to having a political skirmish, if you will. So, my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the second time?
Welcome, sir. Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road, haven't moved since the last time. The first thing is, see this book I have here? Somebody challenged the fact that I didn't have the correct facts. They're in this book. I didn't make them up. And the other thing I thought was really neat is, Mr. Tim Neville, who I admired for years as the principal of the school...
years as the principal of the school, he spent 35 years there with no ill effects. No PCB problems from Mr. Neville. 35 years, that's longer than any student would have to spend there. And the state, there's no free money from the state. It's not free. It might be spread over the whole state because of the greed of towns trying to bankrupt the state with spending that they don't need to spend. That needs to be clear. And, you know, people talk about this good school system. The school enrollment is down every year for the past 18 years by, on average, 200 kids, yet the budget continues to go up, higher and higher every year. And guess what doesn't go up? Grades. If they were in the top 10 percentile of performance, we could then adjust the amount of money that we're spending per student, because it's out of sight, what we're spending per student. But we can't do that, because the grades aren't high enough for these super schools that we provide. And the other thing is, just as a side note, I understand, and I haven't verified this, but according to what I saw on the computer, they sent kids home from the air-conditioned Enfield High School, because it was too hot. That's what was on, I don't, like I said, I didn't verify that, but that's what was on the computer. And the other thing that people may or may not know here tonight is, there was under consideration by you guys, a supplement tax bill, because of the lack of funding from the state. The state shorted us last year by $4.5 million. And you were considering, you had to consider, you were between a rock and a hard place, yet to consider whether you should send out supplement tax bills. Do the people here that are all saying yes, yes, yes to this, understand that that's the position we were in because of the state's lack of money? Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else like to speak for the second time? Sir? No, Bob? Bob, sorry. Him first, then you? I didn't see you raise your hand, Bob, sorry.
Mike Gorley, 27 Monroe Road. And I get really sick of your...
Sir, 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 you gotta...
Yeah, that's nice.
All right. Sir.
Want to draw a gun on me?
Hey, Jack. Sir.
What the hell's the matter with you?
Sir.
Talk to you later. I'd like to comment on PCBs.
I gotta stop. First of all, the language has got to be clear. Again, I don't want to hear any swearing in the council chambers. Sir, I know, I'm just saying, sir, you look forward to us. If you and Jack want to take it outside later, that's up to you.
Gladly.
But again, please, I understand, but just speak, please, right towards the council.
Yeah, so I just get frustrated with the misinformation that's been shared, especially when it comes to PCBs. They're a highly caustic chemical that was banned in 1979. It was a year I've born, right? It has not been a legal chemical in such a long time. And the fact that we're sending our kids to school where PCBs are present, it's unacceptable, and we need to do something to fix that. And the shortsighted nature is unacceptable. We have to act on this for the safety of the children, and the nice benefit of the educational benefit, as well as the investment to do better for the town. So that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. And folks, again, limit the conversation in the audience, please, so everyone deserves their right to speak. Anyone else like to speak for the second time? Bob.
Bob T. Katz, 815 Woodgate Circle. What's the state of our schools? Where do we stand compared to the rest of the state? Well, we're in the bottom 20%. Enfield High, out of 100 high schools in Connecticut surveyed, we're 93. We're near the bottom. Everybody says we have a great school system, but we're not doing anything to improve the school systems. We think buildings are going to improve education. Buildings do not improve education. Classroom instruction, teachers, they make the school system. They show the performance. The state will not release where everybody stands, but I know we're in the bottom 20%. And that's unacceptable. Debt service, out of control in Enfield. We should be not paying the tax level that we're paying. We should have cut five mills. Down in Meriden, they had a referendum on the budget. 96% of the people voted no. Now, what the mayor has done, he's cut all the pensions of all the administrators, drastically cut. Cut the police department. You have 60,000 people down in Meriden, and they have 113 police officers. We have almost as many, and we have only 40,000. We have a third less. So there's a lot of places we can cut in Enfield, and we're not doing it. The other thing is that people don't realize what the state has done, because we lack diversity in Enfield. We don't represent what's across the state. So they have a program called the Open Choice Program. What they do is, and probably none of you know about it, students come out of Hartford. We're assigned, so many students from Hartford, to change the diversity. We have presently 85 students come in. This started in 2005, when they started with 75 students. This program goes on to 2025, we're going to have 149. There's going to be about 10 students in each grade. They're all picked out. So we're paying, we get a stipend for that, $2,000, and they say, well, what's great? The teachers are there anyways. No, when you get 149 students, you have 10 additional in the class. You're going to have to, you're going to have to add teachers. So this costs us a lot of money. I'm for the program, but for people to say it doesn't cost us anything, it's ridiculous. JFK was renovated in 2001. We're still, we still have that debt. That debt goes on to 2025. We're still paying for that. We haven't even finished paying the debts. Now, where do we stand with the rest of the schools? On this engineering study, and they broke it down to priority-one projects, priority-two and priority-three, what needs to be done right away in the schools. That's priority-one. What school has the largest priority percentage in the system? Is Hazerville Memorial. 90% of the renovation has to be priority-one. That school is in the worst shape of all the schools. Enfield Street is number-two worst shape. Crandall is number-three. Number-four is the safety complex, the police station, that needs a multitude of work. Number-five is Brainerd. Number-six is Whitney. Number-seven is Parkman. Now, we go down the list. Where does JFK stand for priority-one? They're 19th out of 28. That school needs the least amount of work, priority-one work, of all the schools. We're neglecting the elementary schools. That's what parents, when they're going to move to a town, they look at the elementary schools. They don't look at the high school, or JFK, the middle school. They're more concerned about their children starting in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And that's where we have neglected the school system. And that's where we have to start. If we're going to have people move in, that's what people look for. The same thing happened with my family. I must have went to five, we went to five schools in different neighborhoods, even Long Meadow, where my parents wanted to move. And we looked, they looked at everything for me to start school. So that's where parents look. They're not concerned about middle school in the early years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the second time? Again, in the essence of time, unless anyone has anything new for a third time, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'm going to enter a letter.
Sorry, Jack, you got something new, Jack?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Jack Sheridan, 7th Buchanan Road. On the Fusco and O'Neill Report on the PCBs, page 11, paragraph 4.1, clearly says, sampling of building materials for PCBs is presently not mandated by the EPA. And it says that PCBs were also added as a plasticizer and caulking used to seal joints between masonry units and around windows, in addition to other building materials such as paints, mastic, sealants, adhesives, and so forth. According to the EPA, PCBs were used in some buildings primarily between 1950 and 1980. So my contention then is that all the buildings, if that's such a problem, then maybe we got to go look at all of the schools, including this building, to see about PCBs in all of them. But the fact is, there's no, the EPA is presently has no mandates for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Bob, unless you've got something new, I'm going to close, we're going to read a letter. You got two minutes? All right.
Bob T. Katz again. Let's talk about PCBs. Probably the most polluted PCB area is Pittsfield, Massachusetts, from the GE plant. The Hoosatonic River is polluted with PCBs from the GE plant down to the dam, and I think it's in Derby, the Hoosatonic River. There's been no debts attributed to PCBs in Pittsfield. They have, they have not, and GE refuses to dredge the river. They dredge it a mile and a half, and they say, that's it. The plant is closed, the air is clean, but there's been no debts related to PCBs in Pittsfield, which is the most polluted PCB area in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to read a letter into record, and then we're going to close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Actually, Chris, it's a letter I received. Should I read it into the record, or should it be given into the record? It's...
It's your choice. You can read it or you can answer it.
Since, you might as well read it in, since you've even, I don't, you may not read the whole thing. We'll submit the whole letter. It's a long letter.
It's a long one.
Two pages, so select some paragraphs.
Don't you just say who it's from, and then we'll submit it.
Okay, she did do a nice job. This is from Wendy Costa. She lives at 49 Steel Road. She's in favor of the referendum. She, I could read her whole, it's about a five-minute read. I defer to the council.
Go ahead, it's open. Five, yep, go ahead. Go right ahead. Yep.
Okay, it says, "I'm sorry I couldn't make it here in person to comment on the JFK referendum. I also apologize for my comments. Do not reflect any discussion that has occurred as part of this meeting. I'd like to start by saying I am retired, living on a fixed income. I don't like to see anything go up in price, and that goes for my taxes, too. I also have lived in Enfield for six years. So my children don't attend Enfield schools, and while I wish my grandchildren lived in Enfield or closer to me, they don't. So I really have no personal benefit from having a renovate-to-new middle school. That being said, I am supporting the JFK referendum, because I believe it is what is best for the children of Enfield and the town of Enfield. And therefore, in a direct way, I'll see some benefit." And that's her opening paragraphs. And the rest goes on. She talks about the taxes and everything else, but we've heard from everybody, and I thank Wendy for taking the time. And this, the whole letter will be in the minutes for everyone to read.
Thank you. I move the public hearing be closed at 8 o'clock. I would give folks five minutes. We've got to get going. Some folks, we have some special guests that have been waiting, so we're going to jump right into the regular meeting. Sorry if you have to step out, go right ahead. But item number one, prayer.
I'm going to ask the special guest to...
So, yeah, okay. I have the prayer. Interesting, public hearing. I have a prayer for, a prayer poem for our students, our teachers, our parents, and our staff for the start of school. Dear Lord, enlighten our minds with truth. Inspire our will with courage. Enrich our life through service. Teach us to think before we speak, because there are always multiple sides to any truth. Amen. A predilegence to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mueller. Deputy Mayor Susak. Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Councilor Arnone.
Here.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
Councilor Sikala.
Here.
Councilor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Davis.
Here.
Councilor Denny.
Here.
Councilor Falk.
Here.
We have 11 members present and are absent.
Item number four is fire evacuation. We have doors at the back of the building. Either go left or right, calmly out the doors in case of a fire alarm, or you go out to the doors to our left, to your right. Go out the first doors to your left once you exit. Go down the stairs, around the column, and go right out the doors. Item number five, we have the minutes of proceeding minutes. Do we have the special meeting of August 6, 2018, to have a motion to approve?
To move.
By Councilor Falk.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Arnone. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done by, show of hands, all those in favor? Any abstentions? Any against? 11 in favor, zero against? Regular meeting of August 6, 2018, to have a motion to approve?
Approve.
By Council Falk, seconded by Councilor Denny. Any discussion on the regular, on the minutes of regular meeting? Hearing done by, show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 10 in favor, one abstention? So first of all, I appreciate our special guest having patience. So thank you. So first up is Ms. Aaron, and again, since it's the first time I get to call you a public, I'm going to ruin your name. We're go. All right.
Bring it.
Come on up. It won't be the first time I ruin your name. So it's an honor. Welcome.
Thanks.
Aaron, take a seat first.
Take a seat, and then Chris, right?
Yes.
So I'll turn it over to Chris. First of all, welcome, Aaron.
Thank you.
I know it's a big night. Appreciate your patience.
Yes.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. We're very pleased to have Captain Rigget here. She started working with the town in 2008, when she was an EMT. Later that year, she became a paramedic. In 2011, she was promoted to be one of our lieutenants. And then in 2013, we promoted her to be captain. And I'm very proud to have her here this evening, because as Public Safety Director, I work with her closely, and with her chief, Gary Womocley. She has done a wonderful job for the town. She is here this evening to be recognized for her past accomplishments. She's done a lot of programs, Safe Heart Community, and other things in affiliation with our hospice, to make our service second to none in the state. She's acted many times in Gary's absence as really an acting chief. And we're here this evening not only to promote her to the chief, we're very happy that we have somebody within the ranks who's ascended through them, who knows the service, and actually up until most recently, for a very apparent reason, she was still jumping on the rigs, and she was a working captain. I'll tell you, I'm very pleased, because we're really, and I, this is now public knowledge, we now have, we're getting two-for-one with Aaron, because she's going to be expecting her first child in February, and we congratulate her on that.
Congratulations.
But we're all here this evening, and I think we're going to have Suzanne swear her in, so we could all join in congratulating her, and that our, all of her family and friends and our residents at home share in this moment. And I believe Gary Womocley's going to come up, our former chief, and we thank him for his many years of service, and for helping mentor and bringing us such a wonderful candidate for chief.
Thank you.
So Aaron, anything you want to say before we get sworn in? It's your time.
No, just in the interest of time, I know we're behind schedule. It's an honor to be here. I've really enjoyed my time with the town of Enfield. I look forward to many more years of service to this community. So thank you. It's an honor.
Congratulations. Suzanne?
Director, chief. Mayor and Rigget, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as director for the Enfield Emergency Medical Services to the best of your ability? So have you got it? I vote. Congratulations. Thank you. (applause)
Hey, it was a Hawaiian shirt Friday. I would have worn my Hawaiian shirt.
Tired.
There you go. Looks good on you, Aaron.
Thank you. Very...
Yes, we wanted, in keeping with our tradition of introducing new members of our staff, we wanted to bring Mr. Stedward in. He had been back with the town when he started his career in building, back in 2010 to 2013. He went on to some other communities, we let them teach him, mentor him, and now that he's a fine wine, we brought him back. He was in Bloomfield for the last five years as their chief building inspector, working them through some very large projects. He was very excited to come to the town, he knows a lot of the development and a lot of the things that are gonna be moving forward here. He gave some thought and consideration, and then was kind enough and gracious enough to accept the position as chief building inspector. A lot of people from the council and our community remember him and know him and respect him because of his respect for our citizens, his knowledge of the job, but also his customer service, and that's what we're trying to build in Enfield. We had always had that, and I think our town was known for it, to show respect and consideration for our residents, even if you have to tell them no about something, you do it in a respectful way. He brings that to the table, he's joined our development team, we're gonna hear from Lori Whitten, the director, in a moment, and I think he's a wonderful addition to the staff, we're happy to have him, and we wanted to bring him here to say hello and let you attach a name to a face.
Welcome, sir, you have the mic, anything you'd like to, you know, speak of while you're here?
Yeah, thank you very much for the warm welcome, it is good to be back. You know, I met a lot of great people here, in my time here, it's a really, it's a really great town, you've got a really good mix of industrial, commercial, residential stuff. You know, as Chris said, you know, I really pride myself on that balance between regulation and customer service. You know, I don't think it's very easy to do so, it's, you know, sometimes it's very difficult to give people bad news, but there's no reason you can't do it in a good way and try to help someone out of, you know, a problem, you know. You don't wanna just give someone some bad news and walk away, you wanna try to give them a way to work through a problem that they might not be very familiar with, and you know, that's, that's a big part of the job, and that's what I look forward to doing.
Very cool. Anyone, any questions for, put 'em on the spot, anyone, first meeting, no?
Welcome.
Well, welcome back to Enfield, and again, we expect to be the economic power of northern Connecticut, so that's your goal.
That's fine with me.
All right, very good, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray.
(applause) Along, Ms. Lori Whitten, director of development services. Now, do you want any?
Yeah, just briefly, Lori, Lori's prepared, we have some for the public, and in your packet, we put it together in this little folder. Before our last director had left, we had come up with a reorganization plan, which I liked, but we then wanted to wait for Lori to come, to get acclimated, to meet her staff, to see what the community needed and what she believed her department needed. And after that review, she concurred in the implementation of that reorganization plan. So she's not gonna spend a lot of time on it, she's prepared the documents for you and the public, but it is much more streamlined. I have to tell you truthfully, sitting here for many, many years, I never really understood the lines of director of development, planning, building, it just didn't make sense to me that it was at cross purposes. This plan, as you'll see, is very symmetrical, it makes sense to anyone, even a layman like myself, and I think that she has done a good job. Why it's important later this evening, part of the redevelopment, or the reorganization was to add an assistant director, she will choose, she worked hard on that, from her experience, she worked with Steve Belinda, she believes that's the right fit for our organization. It's on the job, or the job description for your consideration later in the meeting, and we'll implement that, implement that, and then we'll be up to speed. We'll have all of the persons in place, as the mayor said, to get us moving and be a locomotive in this north, northern part of Connecticut. And I think we have all the right people in place now, we have the enthusiasm, and I think the talent and the experience to do that, and without further ado, I'll let Lori just give you a little snippet of the reorg, and as I said, we have a chart and an explanation of it in your packet, and also available for the public, too.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'll be quick, you have two charts, one is the black and white development services reorganization, and then the other, and the other one is development services organizational chart. The black and white one basically shows you how the different departments are going to be reorganized, and what basic, what components are within each one, and then the organizational chart really just shows you exactly who and how many employees are in each task. We kept on the vacant vacancies, or the vacant job titles, or those that were eliminated, just so you could see the difference. So, but the nuts and bolts of this is that the director of economic development and the director of community services is essentially being combined together as one. That person will take over the majority of those duties that were already listed, and as the director of development services, I will be taking over more of a feel for the planning department, so I will oversee the planning department with a little bit more fine tooth than, say, the previous director did. So, I could go further, but I think everything is pretty much, pretty much spelled out, but if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Lori? Again, thank you for, we should do this, org, good org charts are the simplest thing and the most effective piece of communication, we're trying to explain people how you work as an organization. So I hope we do this all the time in every department, because I agree, during the budget, we had some org charts that made no sense, so this is, this is very good, so thank you. And I agree with you, it should be pretty much a vertical, you know, and...
And we're gonna post it on the website, so citizens can also look, so they know what the org chart is, and they know the people that are in those positions. So I thank you, Lori, for your hard work on it, thank you.
Thank you for your patience, appreciate it, thank you very much.
I have to give credit to Sue Roche, my, my new administrative assistant, because she did it all, and she was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Item number seven, public communications, again, this is the regular meeting, so you can speak on any subject, not just, obviously not just JFK. Anyone like to speak before the town council on the regular meeting? Anyone like to speak for the council? Hearing none, I declare public communications closed. Item number eight, council communication, does anyone like to speak? Counselor Falk?
Over on Town Farm Road, across from the entrance to the recycling center, there's a recreational field, and the grass has not been mowed in, I don't know, a month, month and a half, it's probably a foot deep. I was hoping that you could send somebody out, not on overtime, of course, and mow the grass. Thank you.
Counselor Bosco?
Okay, I just wanted to go over something I went over last meeting, you know, there's, there's still a scuttlebutt out there that the council, mainly the Republican council, did no improvements on these buildings, and that the town people shouldn't put any money towards anything new, and they're blaming us, the council, for not repairing the buildings, for the school and the town, and I just want to let everyone know that this council, pretty much 99% of the time, maybe 95%, votes bipartisan, and most of our decisions have been bipartisan right along, including this one here. Shall the town of Enfield appropriate $44 million for reconstruction, repair, improvements to various town-owned facilities, including security enhancements to school buildings, and authorize the issue of bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in the amount to exceed, not to exceed $44 million to finance said appropriation? And it says, "A resolution was adopted by the town council at a meeting held August 24, 2015, shall be submitted to a referendum vote on the voting machine or paper ballots by town electors, qualified voters, for the approval and disapproval in conjunction with the election held Tuesday, November 3, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. If approved, the resolution presented under the ballot heading above will appropriate $44 million for costs to relate it to reconstruction, repair, improvements to town-owned facilities, including security enhancements to school buildings, the projects, in accordance to the plan titled 'Enfield, Town of Enfield 2015 Propose Reconstruction. Repair improvements to various town-owned facilities, including security, building referendum dated July 1, 2015,' the plan. The appropriation may be expanded for site improvements, design, construction costs, plumbing, electrical costs, installation, and financing costs of other related to the project. Appropriation shall include federal and state aid received for the project. The appropriation may be expanded for all portions of the individual projects listed in the plan. The town will finance the appropriations by issuing town bonds, notes, obligations, in the amount of not to exceed $44 million, using federal, state, or other grants in aid or other funds received for the project. Using monies available for the unappropriated encumbered general fund cash balance in accordance with the procedures of Chapter 4, Section 8 of the Town Charter. Using the monies available for sources as determined by the resolution of the town council." So, that failed. It failed by, we had 200, I mean 2,556 votes for yes, and 3,651 for no. So I just wanna make sure that when people say that, especially, you know, the Facebook posts that started up the other day, the Republican council, what, we all voted pretty much unanimous, and we did things that sometimes we didn't agree on, but they're also to blame for the bad, and they're also to blame for the good, because the Democrats did do a lot of good through the councils that I've been sitting on, and one of them was trying to get the buildings fixed. So we, as the Republican caucus, don't deserve all the negative credit that goes along with it. We all tried, as a council, both Democrat and Republican, to fix these buildings, but we're encumbered by a $600,000 cap on our charter. So I just wanna make sure, and I'm gonna keep reading this until we get to our referendum, it's very important that either, if you're for the referendum, you come and vote yes, if you're against it, you come and vote yes, the taxpayers are the only ones that know what they wanna spend their money on, but again, don't blame just the Republican council because they said we didn't fix the buildings, we couldn't fix the buildings, and the Republicans and the Democrats both tried. So that's where I'm ending the note.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Counselor Davis?
On a positive note, to the mayor, to the town manager, I personally wanna say thank you, to you and your staff for, you know, taking it forward, cleaning the buildings all summer, make sure Barnu was clean in the remaining schools, and I just wanna say thank you. I personally appreciate it, and I know a lot of the parents I spoke to and the staff, they do too, so I just wanna know and let the public know that you guys are doing an amazing job getting the schools clean and virally make sure they're clean, and that was one of my biggest arguments of, how can you support a referendum for a new school if other schools aren't even clean? So I do wanna say thank you very much, you guys have been on the forefront, taking care of it, and, which now leads me that I would fully support the referendum, because we are making sure other schools are being clean, so no one does get sick, so I just wanna say thank you. And welcome back to all the students and staff through town, it's been a great week at the schools, everybody's upbeat, you know, last year they started even the half-days, which is great, and to clarify any half-days, if we have a half-day in town, it goes to every single school, we can't pick and choose our schools, but it was amazing to see a half-day, especially JFK, because you have brand-new sixth graders coming in, and then all the times are shifted for them, and the staff did amazing there, so kudos to all our staff, our teachers, everybody out there with our Enfield Public Schools, appreciate them all very much, thank you.
Half-day dreszek. Half-day dreszek strikes again. Anyone else? Counselor Crisati?
Yeah, going along with those same, same lines, you know, a shout, a welcome back to all the students and all the staff at Enfield Public Schools, and once again, the custodial staff, I talked to them throughout the whole summer, they really went above and beyond their duties to get these buildings ready, and a shout-out goes to all the custodians, all the summer help that really busted their backs to get these schools ready without coming to us saying that we need help, because we were there ready to help them, but they took it upon themselves to get the job done, and they did a fine job with that. On another note, the Enfield Police Department should be, have a pat on their back for their concentrated efforts and the successful swarms that they've had down in Thompsonville section of town, and the EMS staff and how they respond to the opiate overdoses that have been plagued in our town. Finally, there was one person that, on an opiate revival, Narcan, they did ask for help, so one person did ask for help, they are seeking treatment, hopefully other people will take that step to successfully try to beat their addictions. It's a very difficult process, but at least one person took advantage of the help that is offered to people that have overdoses, so I wanna say to the Enfield Police Department, keep that good work up. And also Chief Fox is going over the edge this weekend for, in benefit of Special Olympics program, which is very dear to my heart and to our family, so, and I know that I'm gonna be there to support him from going over the edge over at Fox, which I think that's very noble of him, at Mohegan Sun, I believe, yeah, at Mohegan Sun. Also, I wanna give a shout-out to town manager and to Lori Whitten for their helping with a water problem issue on, in our particular district, and clear, getting that problem all taken care of, and they made that family pretty happy, so thank you for that. So trying to be positive with all the things that are going on in our town here, those are pretty special, okay, so thank you for that, and I also wanna thank the people that did come out, this, to an ice cream social that we had down in Thompsonville, which is sponsored by Crisati Baseball School, I wanna thank the council members that came out in attendance, Chief Fox, all the people from social services that did come out, and we had, you know, a nice ice cream social, an appreciation day, and welcoming students, whether they're elementary school, middle school, and high school kids coming out, and there were pretty close to 100 people within the short hour that we did have, so it was nice, so, you know, now it can go on its diet.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I guess, first of all, was, I had the pleasure of attending the dedication and ribbon-cutting of the Hall of Fame at the Enfield High School, most of the town council was there, but, just to see the look on their faces as they walk out there and they see the banners on one side for Fermi, and the banners on the other side for Enfield High, and the United banner up overhead, it, all the work and all the effort that the townspeople and the committees they put in place, you know, it, it's tangible for us to see, and at that, we were able to honor the building committee, the board of ed had a gift from them for the high school, and the town is saying to them, please keep your iPads, so, thank you, and I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items A1, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion made.
Second.
By Counselor Falk, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed, we have 11 in favor, zero against, all set. Counselor Ungary?
I'd like to welcome all the new students and staff, I hope they have a great school year, also, best wishes to our great board of ed team back there, I appreciate all that you do, and I thank you for it. I also attended the Hall of Champions ceremony that they had last week at Enfield High, and I wanted to commend...
By Counselor Falk. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing number, show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? We have 11 in favor, zero against. All set. Counselor Enger.
I'd like to welcome all the new students and staff. I hope they have a great school year. Also, best wishes to our great Board of Ed team back there. I appreciate all that you do, and I thank you for it. I also attended the Hall of Champions ceremony that they had last week at Enfield High, and I wanted to commend the Building Committee and everyone at EHS that made that happen. The talent from Enfield is just amazing, and it was so nice to see us celebrate the talent from both high schools in one place. It's beautiful. Get a chance to go over there and take a look at it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go quick in closing. I want to just thank the students who cooked for us that night. And again, pronunciation is not my strength, whereas all the Smith and Joneses anymore. Jack Pascalwalla, I apologize, Jack. Desiree Napper, Abigail Doherty, and again, here's the teacher, Joshua Organowski. All, again, provided some food for the council and the board on the 28th, which was, again, they took time out of their day, even though it was hot and half-day drezik struck again, and they had to stay in there all night. I also want to thank my man Ty from Dunkin' Donuts on Rafi Road, makes the best caramel swirl ace coffee in town. So, go and see him over at Dunkin' Donuts. And then, just for everyone here, on September 15th noon, you've all been invited to the grand opening of Sarapes, and again, I hope I say that correctly, down on High Street, 12 o'clock, September 15th, which is a Saturday. Again, Dinner and a Movie will be coming shortly to Thompsonville. So, that's all I have to say. And moving on. A manager report and communications.
I have no formal report. If there are any questions on the par or in regard to anything else, I'd be happy to answer them or try to.
Counselor, no.
Yeah, so on the property maintenance piece that you're trying to put together, Property Maintenance Review Committee, I have one request, to make sure that we do have employee representation on that committee. I know, as you make it up, it's always good to have everyone at the table. And if you could elaborate a little more on it?
Sure. I know the council's asked for sort of a blight review committee, so that persons who believe they have hardship could come forward to us, those who we've placed liens on their property for various reasons under the ordinance and the state statutes. We convened a meeting, and it's all town employees at this juncture, from all of the different disciplines in the town. We're going to be reporting and meeting every month to work on those matters. The legal department has a proposed, they've gotten different samples from around the state of what the blight review board would look like, and that will be, that will really be up to the council to determine the composition of it. But our committee is going to be looking at another top-10 list of worst properties. We're going to be looking at all the legal abilities, not just to put liens on property to the end of the earth, but to try to then have a cutoff point where council could say, all right, at this juncture, if the person's working with you, they can come, you know, perhaps to the blight review for relief, or let's, how can we resolve this? Maybe an elderly person, somebody who's handicapped, who doesn't have the financial resources to fix something, to try to assist them. We don't want to go to court with those individuals. But for those recalcitrants who really have no desire to help us, and have really been kind of hostile, and have resources to fix a property so that they don't, you know, actually reduce the property values in the neighborhood where other neighbors have to look at this blight day in, day out, then we probably have a more aggressive approach. But we want to put that all in policy, so it's consistent and fairly implemented across the board. We'll be having that presentation to come to you in September, early October, for your review and consideration.
There's a lot of times, it's been a little blind to the problems that, you know, may be happening inside the household, and, you know, we don't get, until it comes before us, it's, then it's, by that time, the fines are astronomical.
Right. And it's unreasonable to go to a judge and say, on this person's home, we have $150,000 in fines because they, you know, they were unable to cut their grass, or it isn't really sightly. A judge isn't going to really, basically, foreclose or see somebody's property, so we don't go to court in a good standing. We want to make it more reasonable, so that the fines stop, and we look at another avenue. Because really, we're not trying to generate revenue here. We're trying to get the person to come into compliance for the good of the neighborhood and the town, and for them even, in some circumstances. So, we're going to look at it all from building, clean and lean, the property maintenance, blight, and come up with a common sense approach. We're putting together a notebook, Mr. Iñónez, that's going to have every procedure, so whomever sits here, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. When we have new staff, they can look at the procedures. If we, if state law changes, we can amend it and put it there, but it'll sort of be the Bible, and I think it'll be, it'll be much more effective, and it'll be fairer. So, we're working very hard on that. We had the initial meeting. We're meeting again in another week, and we'll be prepared to come forward with that for your review shortly.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. And part of that, Chris, so part of you are more aggressive, hopefully, that's directed towards absentee landlords and banks who sit on properties and act like they no longer own those properties?
Sometimes, those are the, those are the worst offenders, and certainly, we don't have as much sympathy with them as we would with, you know, somebody suffering hardships. So, the policy will be addressed accordingly.
I saw roughly 20% sometimes is our number of folks who own multifamilies, who actually live in town. Heard that was the percentage. That's true. I'm just saying it was a percentage that someone threw at me, which obviously can generate some of the blight that we're going to be dealing with. So, I appreciate your staff going, because this is, I know, Council Bosco, I'll defer to him, because I know this is his issue, so I think this is important. Go ahead, Joe, you can take the floor.
I am so glad we're finally getting this. This has been something, I've been talking with Bill Lee for years, and thank you, Chris, for finally getting it up, because we, there are a lot of people that just can't afford to do everything, and they really need the help and the relief that they can get through a board. And then, there's others that can do it and just refuse to. And that's, that's really what we want to do, is, you know, help the people that need the help, but yet, take care of the ones that are just doing it blatantly, especially the banks. So, I am so glad that we're finally moving on this. I can't wait to see all the draft paperwork, and I just say thank you, you and your staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris on the par, or anything for the Town Manager? You're off the hook. Item number 10, Town Attorney Report, Maria.
Thank you. I don't have a formal report, but we did get some information from USI about the golf carts. I don't know if you'd like to hear about that tonight, but just briefly, in terms of what they would recommend, they want to see a hold harmless executed, both from the association and from the drivers, and they'd also like to see proof of liability.
So, that'll be before us. Is that going to a committee first before us?
That's being referred, yes. It's being referred to the subcommittee, and it'll be on the council agenda for next time. We also have the input from police. The chief is actually there on a meet and greet this evening at Shaker Pines. They're the ones who initiated the request, but it affects the entire town, so that the council must weigh in on it and make a considered decision. But that's what the risk manager said, that we can do it, but they wanted to make sure people had insurance, and that the association, because we're changing this, that there would be hold harmless agreements, and that's something for your consideration.
Any chance we send son to the association president, just letting them know?
Well, we're going to, I told the chief to let them know this evening. It's going to be on, I believe, Development Services in September, and on the council agenda. So, we'll make sure they're aware, and that they can come and be heard.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
I guess I have a question on the golf cart. If they're on town roads, will they be registered vehicles at that point, and will they be required to have a licensed driver?
Yeah, they definitely need a licensed driver. Section 14300G outlines the specific requirements in order to allow golf carts. The road can only have a 25 mile an hour speed limit. The has, the golf cart has to have an operable horn, there has to be a flag visible, the person has to have a driver's license, they have to have it on them.
And that's an insured moving vehicle?
Yes.
Be on your homeowner's insurance. Would be or not, it would be on your homeowner's.
Great. And that, would that eliminate all-terrain vehicles, or would that open the door for all-terrain vehicles to be on our streets?
Well, that I'm not sure of. This particular statute addresses golf carts in particular. I mean, it has to be approved by the traffic authority, and that's why I mentioned the USI piece, because the carry, or USI risk had these particular suggestions. But the statute outlines very specifics, and as to all-terrain vehicles, I can't speak to it, but they're not covered in this statute.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was for the Town Attorney. Only just one last question. Any quick update on the lawsuit that we joined back in the spring? Any updates?
I have not heard. I believe that there was something sent about a month ago, but I'm not prepared to address the specifics of it.
Item number 11, report of special committees of the council. Do we have any reports of special committees? Counselor, no?
Yeah, Donna, if you don't mind, we went to the facility sub-canyon today with the, on a water pollution control construction kickoff meeting, and Bob and Joe, and I know Donna wanted to go there, which is a bit of a side thing, too, that we, when we have a lot of these, all of us work for anyone out there. We have full-time jobs, and, you know, we also, you know, do all our volunteer stuff. So, when these get scheduled in the mid-afternoon, a lot of us can't attend, and we have to take our own vacation and personal time at work. So, if we can try in the future, because even the construction groundbreaking is scheduled for an afternoon, and again, the council's not going to be, a lot of us are not going to be able to find the time to go to that. And I wanted to actually bring that up, see if we could try to, in the future, try to schedule, schedule these after, after 5:00. But, so, the good news was, all the alternatives, these are parts of the project that get kind of kicked to the back burner, because they're either too expensive, or we just can't do them. There's a long list of alternatives in this contract. The contract came in below bid, very low bid. We saved a lot of money. Now, all the alternates are back up on the table, and they're all going to get completed, which is good for a clean environment, and it's great for the, the water pollution control plant itself. These alternates, I believe, were crucial, and I was extremely happy, all of us were happy to see today that they're all up on the table, and they're all going to get completed, and these things just make, save us money in process, in processing all the, the waste products that come out of our 5 million gallons of sewage a day. So, I'm very happy to hear that, and I'm happy that you attended today, Chris. I, it was very nice to see you in there, and we look forward to the next phase, which is groundbreaking, which is, will be in next month, and the project be up and running. So, again, great job for the engineers, the staff, and everybody else, and the bids coming in low was, was phenomenal, and we, hopefully, this project will be smooth and under budget also. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Okay. And I guess the Leisure Committee meeting met, and I saw on the par that they're doing a monkey survey on the senior center hours, so see if we can improve our delivery of programs. And also, I know they've been working with Mary Keller, and how, you know, how the programs are put in place, and how the funding comes to offer everything. Playscape is ready to order for Hasfield Memorial School. Hopefully, it'll be going up in mid-October. Fingers crossed. Once that's done, Leisure's going to meet again, because there's been a request that we actually look at all the playscapes and come up with a plan for where they will best be used, and how do we get to a point where all our playscapes are on a, on a good par, and we maybe can take a break from playscapes and do a little something else. Skateboard's been up and running. It's in good, being used extensively. If we could get some more money in the CIP, the state has changed the statute, so we could actually do the last two wings on that, and have that completed to 100%, but it requires money to go in the CIP. We talked about expanding pickleball to include perhaps some instruction. It seems like nationwide, it's catching on as a sport that all ages are playing, so we're trying to offer programs that everybody will use. The money's in place for the upgrades to the annex pool. Quarter million dollars will be put into that pool with the decision, as everybody talked about, with the JFK pool elimination. With going to one pool, we can put our resources in there and give ourselves a pool that is A number one. Also, we talked about the visit to Camp Tons of Fun. They moved to the annex from JFK. We heard that they are at capacity, they have a waiting list, and with being at the annex, they can expand. So, we're going to have them come and talk about the program, and see if we can guarantee, which we will, because PCVs will be done next year at JFK, that they will be at the annex, and they can expand their program and take in more students that are on the waiting list. And there's probably a few more things that I've probably forgotten, but I'm going to go on to it now, my update on facilities. Seems it takes longer than we all imagine to get a, get through the state and get approved to put roofs on buildings. We have in place, we're waiting for the three bids. I see Chris out in the audience. He hasn't waved me and said, gee, I have really good news for you. Now, and he's shaking his head. So, the only thing I will tell you is, we have a plan. We will be doing second shift roofing on the two sections at the Henry Barnard School when we get our three quotes. We will have Saturday construction as well. We will move forward. But, that being said, we are, we have asked the staff to give us an evaluation of the Eli Whitney Roof, because that seems to be our next opportunity to improve our roofing systems in our town. So, we'll look at two sections at the Eli Whitney, and proceed with the Henry Barnard Roof with two more sections. This, though, will require that we have the money in place this fall, because we're going to have to start the application 10 months ahead of time. We're not going to do what we did, wait for the money to be in place, because when we waited for the money to be in place, we were a little late out of the gate, and there's a lot of gates that need to be opened before we can do any roofing. So, and then, in September, we're starting the search. We're doing some research on our RFP to look at the town buildings that we own, and should we consolidate, or should we keep everything open? We don't know. And I think after that, from what we all hear, we need to go on to parks and everything else in town, because we need to deliver what we do the best and most affordable for our citizens. Thank you.
Counselor Falk.
Just to note, the, now that Lori Whitten's on board, the Development Services Subcommittee will be meeting on September 10th. And we hope to get a firm feel for where she is on some of the projects that already have been started, and where she might plan on going.
Correct.
Let you know.
Okay. Moving on, item 12, old business. We have appointments, Town Council appointments for Items A1 through 2. On page 1, we have none. Moving to page 2, again, council appointments, 3 through 15, we have none. On page 3, council appointments, Item 16 through 19, we have none. Item B, appointments by the Town Manager, Items 1 through 10, none. Moving on to page 4, again, Town Manager, 11 through 15 appointments, none. Item C, the resolutions is all the Enfield High Committee stays on the table?
Yes.
All right. And so, we'll work with that group, just from timing and process, and so we don't keep scaring them, we're going to do it without letting them know?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Item D, request for transfer of funds, development of transfer services, excuse me, request for transfer of funds for Development Services Transit Center, 211,878, right? Needs to be, come off the table?
Yes.
We have a motion to remove.
Don't move.
By Counselor, no, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Susak. All those, all those in favor, removing from the table? Those opposed? Any abstentions? 11 in favor, zero against?
I would ask John Wilcox to come up briefly to explain, this is something that's been on the table. This is part of the brown field and part of the transportation area for testing. We pay the money in advance, and then we submit it for reimbursement. We finally got approval from the state, and the federal government has actually sent us the check, and this is the procedure the council has to pass, this resolution, to get the money back. But John can answer any specific questions.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. This is kind of a unique situation, in that most of the grants we get, we do have to write checks for 100% of the cost of a project. This particular one, most pieces of the, of the grant, we fund only our 20% share of it. However, these legal fees, we've been paying 100% of that, and we only appropriated enough for 20, our 20% share. So, we are getting, we've gotten reimbursement from the federal government for their 80% share. Now, because we only appropriated our 20%, we've reduced the budget, and now we have to rebuild the budget back up. So, that's what this transfer is for.
And Jonathan, what specifically is this for, for, in a, is this, is this for, what project on a, down in Thompsonville?
This is part of the Intermodal Transit Center project. This is for a lot of environmental testing and...
Which specific site? Is it a former Ever Source site?
Yes. Yes, that's it.
Okay. So, that's where that, those ugly gray buildings are on the river?
Right.
All right. All right, got it. Counselor Enone.
So, through somebody, have those results come back yet?
We're waiting. They said by the end of August. We're close to it and I had seen something that they should be imminent. We'll get the reports again. There's confidentiality. So, our attorney's given the summer vacation schedule. John will be inquiring tomorrow and finding out when we can release that information and advise council how we then will proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jonathan, any other questions? Jonathan, anything else?
I'm good.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Oh, sorry. I have to actually read the resolution. Apologize. How about that?
We could have speeded through it there.
You missed that.
I did?
You missed that. Resolve that in accordance, I'm sorry, Item D, on old business, resolution, request for transfer of funds for transfer of funds for Development Services Transit Center, $211,878. Resolve in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made to rail station construction, account 31008-157-545000211,878, from CIP Revenue, Fiscal Year 18, other federal grants, federal highway grant of account 31042018-460002, $211,878. Certified, the funds are available on June 8, 2018 by John Wilcox, Director of Finance, approved by Chris Bronson, Acting Town Manager, on June 29.
So moved.
Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Enone. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnone.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Here's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item 13, new business, Items A, C, D, C and D, we have none. Moving on to Item 14, items for discussion. All these items have been moved to miscellaneous. So, we moved to miscellaneous. Item 14A-1, discussion resolution for the consent agenda, request for transfer of funds from the Building Department of $2,820. Chris, anything brief? It's on a consent?
No, this was just, it's a funded position, but it was open in the Building Department with all of the other changes. We needed to get a temp in there and this is just taking the money from the proper account to replace it. But that position will be filled, but we needed to get a temp in there to help at the desk during the summer, this past summer.
Thank you, Chris. On a consent agenda, all those in favor, by a show of hands. Those opposed? 11 in favor, zero against. We move on to Item E, discussion resolution to transfer of funds for celebrations and special events of $18,000. Well, I'll read the resolution. You hear it right ahead of me? Resolve in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter. We've been off a month. The following transfers hereby made from account 31008-519-533900 of $18,000, Thompsonville revitalization, other professional, to account 3100000-593000 of $18,000, from capital and non-recurring fund allocated expenses, fund transfers out from account 1004000-488000 of $18,000, from general fund revenues transferred from other funds, to account 10700780-589000 of $18,000, general fund celebration and special events miscellaneous expenses, certified, the funds available on August 28, 2018 by John Wilcox, certified by Chris Bronson, Acting Town Manager, on 8/29/2018. By Counselor, Deputy Mayor Susak, seconded by Counselor Crisati. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Falk.
I have to say that when we put the budget together, we didn't have a handle on exactly what it was costing for the various events. And prior to the 4th of July celebration, I had asked Chris to keep close records of what was spent on that event. And that's, I assume that's how we got to where we are here. Now, for next year's budget, you know exactly what we spent this year. So, we'll be able to plan a little bit better.
That is my hope.
Okay. And the other events as well, Family Day, you're going to keep track of all that, too?
Yes.
So, when this comes up again next year, we'll have an accurate feel for what it actually costs to do this stuff. So, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, the next resolution, I don't have it.
Yeah, I have a blank page. I don't know where the final, did everybody have a blank page for the resolution itself?
Sorry, we'll get to, I guess, some side one of the rail. Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, on your, on your, that he did next. Wait till, let's finish this one. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Thank you.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Yeah.
Four.
Donna.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnone.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Here's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you. Item F, sorry for the confusion, Item F, discussion resolution, resolution appointing the Town Manager of the Town of Enfield. Be it resolved that pursuant of Chapter 4, Section 1 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint Christopher W. Bronson as the Town Manager for the Town of Enfield, for the Town of Enfield, set appointment to take effect on September 4, 2018, and be it further resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize Mayor Mike Ludwig to sign the employment agreement with Christopher W. Bronson as the Town Manager for the Town of Enfield, submitted on August 27, 2018 by the Town Manager's Office.
So moved.
By Counselor Enone, seconded by Counselor Denny. Any discussion on a resolution?
I have...
Counselor Falk.
I've known Chris for a long time. I was on the council starting in 1989 and became the Town Attorney back around, I don't know, 1990 or thereabouts. So, the town is, Chris is very cognizant of what goes on in the town, how things operate. He's got a good working relationship with the staff and I think that with his being the Town Manager, we're in good hands and I can already see the results of things are moving along in a positive direction and I look forward to seeing him be the Town Manager. So, I firmly support it.
Thank you. Counselor Enone.
I too firmly support it. This gives the Town of Enfield the chance that we haven't had in the last several years to actually hit the ground running because with a new Town Manager coming off the street, would be a very, very difficult, again, to chase all our hopes and dreams in the Town of Enfield. Chris has the experience, many, many years' experience. He knows what we need to do in this town. He knows how we need to do it. And we couldn't have a better man for the job. I'm really excited to move forward and not have another six, seven months of spinning our wheels here at the council. We need to move forward and a lot of issues and he already has plans and dreams to match ours. So, thank you, Chris. I appreciate you coming aboard with us like this. I know it's going to be a huge task for you when you're looking to do other things in your life at this time, but we really, the Town of Enfield, needs you right now and we need you too. So, thanks again.
Counselor Denny.
Well, the proof is already in the pudding, so another, again, congratulations. I see positive action with new staff members that are doing a dynamic job hitting the ground already running. And that's only attributed to you with the hiring process and congratulations again.
Counselor Crisati.
Want to just go ahead?
You're next.
Well, Chris, congratulations. Welcome as our Town Manager. I know I was number one supporter of you right from day one. I know that when Bryant stepped down, I was pretty vocal and said we should just hire Chris. And I'm glad that you accepted and I'm looking forward to working with you for the next few years.
Thank you. Counselor Bosco.
No, Counselor Sikala.
I know, Chris, you're assuming I'm going to say something funny and sarcastic.
See, I shut you up.
I know, thank you. I'm on the fence about this. I don't know. But no, I'm serious. Very excited that you're taking this position and welcome, or welcome back, or glad you're staying, or any of those things. But you've done a great job in the last 90 or so days, so we're excited to see what you can do for the next couple of years.
Thank you very much. Counselor Davis.
I have to say something.
Ditto.
I already complimented you of how great you're doing, I think, every meeting. So, thank you for accepting it and staying to help us in this role. Very much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bosco.
Well, Chris, all I can say is thank you. You put the fun back in sitting here. We can really see things getting done. I mean, just for the sake of the blight ordinance, I mean, I started talking with that with Matt and it never got anywhere. And then, voila, we get Chris Bronson and now things are moving. And things are moving in a lot of different ways in this town and for the good. And I can only attribute them to you. Thank you.
Well said. Counselor Mueller.
Thank you, Chris. Congratulations. I look forward to working with you.
Counselor Ungary.
I just want to say that I support Chris in this Town Manager position. You bring your experience, your history, and your sense of humor to this position and I appreciate all of that and I look forward to working with you and wish you the best.
Counselor Falk, clearly spokes. We'll go to Deputy Mayor Susak.
Just remember, now the honeymoon's over.
I'm actually emailing you something to fix right now, so...
Sure, I can top that.
About time.
But your hair wasn't gray when you started.
Neither was mine.
Again, everyone spoke very well. So, I'm going to say this as a manager of people. When I go to a school event, those folks are motivated. They have a smile on their face and they're doing stuff for the community, right? Over the last few months, when I've gone to some of the town events, I've seen the exact same reaction that I haven't seen when we started this thing back in November. All of a sudden, we start seeing people with a smile on their face. Simple stuff, right? I mean, hate to say, we can pay, we can argue, we're going to argue contracts, we're going to argue how much we should pay people, but if you can't come to work with a smile on your face, is it really worth it? So, I think that's because you've taken over and it's been noticeable. And I'm a big believer in I know's body language. So, it's something we learned in my training as a manager and the body language of our folks is completely different, which, again, I'm contributing that to you and to your staff. So, keep it up. And I think you believe in the same things this council believes in, that we have, we've only just begun to tap the power that Enfield will have economically, educationally, and everything else socially that we do. And I've heard a comment earlier, and I just want to make sure I say this the right way, that we're not a diverse community. That is so far from the truth. And go out there and spend a little time in the community, you'll see how diverse we really are. And it's a great thing. Go watch a football game. Go watch some of these games. So, I think, you know, that's the beauty of what Enfield brings to the table. And I think that's where, again, I wish you luck because I know you don't need it. And I think all the other councils spoke very well and against September 4, 2018, hopefully it's a good day for you. Thank you, everyone. As we move on, item number G, resolution, oh, I'm sorry, we got to vote. Suzanne, that's when you should have stepped in, Suzanne. Maybe I'll take a quick recess. I'm 0 for 2 tonight. Suzanne, vote, please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnone.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Here's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Good job. Is this allowed? Aaron have the floor? You have the floor?
No, you've heard from me enough over the years. I will just say I'm very humbled by your support and your kind words and I will work as I have over the last, you know, couple of decades here for the town. I love the town. We have a great future together. I appreciate the council's support, the residents' support, our employees, and I think working together as a team, we're going to do great things for the Town of Enfield and I thank you and I'll work my hardest for you.
Thank you. Item G, discussion resolution to fill the vacancy of Assistant Town Manager for the Town of Enfield. Resolve that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize Town Manager Christopher W. Bronson to fill the position of the Assistant Town Manager for the Town of Enfield, submitted on August 29, 2018, submitted by the Town Manager's Office.
So moved.
By Counselor Falk.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Enone. Any discussion? Chris, I don't know, real quick?
I'll just say briefly, I think this is critically important. When I was here, starting in 1990, we had an assistant manager. This town is large enough and needs an assistant Town Manager. There was a decision back a couple of years ago not to fill it. I think we've seen the consequences of that. And I think, most importantly, all of our directors in our top departments, we have a deputy director and assistant. We need that for purposes of succession. That's what this is. I'm not going to be here forever. I'm going to give you my best. We're going to work hard, but I think then we need to pass the mantle on to a new manager who is comfortable with the town, who won't have to hit the ground running. That's who we're going to seek. We're going to hire somebody of a high quality with a lot of council input so that in a couple of years, when I'm ready, you've had enough of me, we have a really capable, competent person who knows the town very well to just seamlessly move forward in the transition. And that's the purpose of this. We have the funding for it. We're not taking this out of the general fund. It's from a lot of accumulation in other areas. We'll have more. We'll start the interview process and by the end of the year, we hope to have a very good, qualified person onboard to assist us with a lot of hard work that's to come. And that's the reason for it.
Any questions for Chris? Counselor Enone.
So, I think one of the biggest problems I had seen without having assistant Town Managers when the Town Manager's not here. It kept getting pushed down to other department heads and there's no consistency there for us because we, it's uncomfortable sometimes, there's the Finance Director, no offense, but to have to start complaining to him. And that's what a Town Manager, we really need that backup in the system. That's only one reason. There are many, many more. So, I will definitely support this and it's good for this town to have a second, somebody that's there for us when we need them in your absence.
Any other questions? I'll just say this, Chris, in this, this is, sometimes you go into a plan, right? And you think you got, you know where you're going and by the time you get into that plan, you realize it's not the right way to go. I just want to comment for the 11 counselors who, again, were professional through the whole entire search process. Again, it wasn't easy. It took a long time and it just wasn't coming to fruition the way we wanted it to. So, like, any elected leadership board, you pivot. You pivot and you move forward. That's exactly what the council did, both Democrats and Republicans. And we all recognize the issue of not having a succession plan. We realize that the changing of our society, there just aren't a lot of folks going in this line of work anymore. It's, we're in a difficult area of the country where, again, we're struggling to keep our young professionals because of the cost to live in the area. And so, we decided to come up with a different plan. And again, both groups, Republicans and Democrats, we worked over the summer. We didn't take the summer off like a lot of folks did. It's, uh, we're in a difficult area of the country where, again, we're struggling to keep our young professionals because of the cost to live in the area. And so we decided to come up with a different plan. And again, both groups, Republicans and Democrats, we worked over the summer. We didn't take the summer off like a lot of folks did. We worked in many different meetings. And to Councilor Arnone's point, we're meeting during the day when a lot of us are working, taking a time off of their personal time. So again, I want to commend the council for pivoting when we recognized we weren't going to have a solution that was going to be best for the town of Enfield. And that's what this really represents, is our ability to pivot as opposed to being straightforward down the line, we're never going to change. And so I think this is representative of the entire council. And again, I congratulate all 10 of you for having some foresight to realize we had to do something different, which I think is really what this means. So, uh, again, I think everyone should be congratulating on that. Now, I already read the resolution. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Arnone.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crissati.
Four.
Councilor Davis.
Four.
Councilor Denny.
Four.
Councilor Falk.
Four.
So 11 in favor, none against and no abstentions.
Just when you think this meeting can't get any more interesting, it gets interesting. Here we go. Item H, discussion resolution to appropriate $84 million, 373,002.94 for the reconstruction and renovation of John F. Kennedy Middle School to authorize the issuance of bonds, notes or temporary notes in amount not to exceed 27 million with the balance funded by grants and, and available funds. I have a, folks, instead of reading the entire resolution, I'm going to read this, then hopefully someone will, uh, again, waive the motion of the entire, uh, resolution. Again, is there a motion to, to, I've already stated the title of the resolution. Is there a motion to waive the rest of the reading?
So moved.
By Councilor Falk, seconded by Councilor Arnone. Yeah. Sure. Yeah, good, good point. Yep. Let me get that. Yeah, good point. So I will read the question and then we'll go to a motion to waive the rest of it. Is that, is that? Is that fair, Chris?
Or I can amend the. Fine.
Do we have to amend?
Chris, after or before?
Suzanne, after or before? Yeah.
Yeah. We're just not going to read the whole thing. Right.
Just, I'll read the question. I'll read the question, then someone after this make a motion to waive the rest of the, okay. Just make sure our procedure's down. The electors and persons qualified to vote in the town of Enfield are hereby warned that the, a referendum vote will be held in conjunction with their elections on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018 between hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time. The polling places used by the town for the election shall be utilized by town electors for purposes of the referendum vote. Voters qualified to vote who are, who are not electors shall vote at Enfield Town, at the Enfield Town Hall. The referendum vote shall be on appropriation and bonding resolution approved by the Town Council on tonight, September 4, 2018, with the resolution shall be placed upon the voting tabulators under the following, uh, heading. Question one. And again, I'm reading in quotes. Shall the town of Enfield appropriate $84 million, 373,002.94 for the reconstruction and renovation of the J.F., John F. Kennedy Middle School? School and authorize the issuance of bonds, notes or temporary notes in amount not to exceed 27 million with the balance funded by grants and other available funds? There'll be a yes or a no. The full text of the Town Council resolution is unfilled, available for public inspection at the Town Clerk's Office. Absentee ballots will be available from the Town Clerk's Office dated Enfield, Connecticut, this day, September 4th, 2018. So moved by, uh, verified by Suzanne Olnicki, the Town Clerk. Is there a motion to waive the rest of the, uh, resolution? By Councilor Denny, seconded by Councilor Crissati. By show of hands, the motion to remove, to waive the rest of the reading? All those are fair and against? We have nine in favor, 10 in favor, one against. We'll be here till like midnight with my pronunciation. So again, motion on a favor, uh, table is the JFK renovation. Waive the rest of the reading. We read the, the, the language that will be in the ballot. Any questions from any councilors or any statements by councilors?
Councilor Denny.
Yes, again, uh, I don't know how everybody feels about this and this, and the public, but, uh, as a councilperson, I will be voting to put this on the ballot to make sure that the people of Enfield have the right to vote yes or no on this. That's your own heart, that's your own soul, whatever you want to do. But that's our, my position here as a councilperson to make sure that this gets on the ballot.
Thank you, Councilor Denny. Councilor Sikala.
Thank you. I, I second what Councilor D, uh, Denny said, that I, I do believe that this is very important to go on the ballot because this is something that each individual voter should be able to vote yes or no, um, based on his or her own research and belief and knowledge. So I hope people go out there and do some knowledge and talk to people and talk to the pack and do their, you know, due diligence. I will go on record by saying I hate the way these questions are written. I can't stand them. I think they're confusing. I understand that we have to abide by the state law, but record, I hate it. That being said, personally, I will tell you that I will be supporting this referendum, um, for various reasons. I do believe that good school systems bring in families and more families that come in, um, help property values and help the tax base. I do understand, Jack, what you were saying before where grants come out of your other pocket. But listen, we're going to pay for it whether we use it or Bridgeport uses it or West Hartford uses it. So I'd rather pay for it and get some benefit from it. So I will be supporting this to go on the ballot and personally, I will be supporting it to vote yes. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Sikala. Councilor Arnone.
Yeah, I too will support both putting it on the ballot and I'll be out there, one of the first in the morning to vote for it. Uh, this will cost us as taxpayers in the town of Enfield $27 million for an $84 million school. That's a, that's a great deal. We should take it while it's there. The money is already appropriated, uh, on the state side. It's, I've had four children go through the school system here, all the going, going through JFK. I've seen it deteriorate from the day it was built. Uh, I, my family, uh, went through that same school. Uh, we have two generations now following through a school that has had no renovations, um, to speak of. So again, it's needed. Uh, this is the right thing for the town of Enfield and, uh, I'll look forward to seeing it pass in, uh, in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Falk.
Uh, I too will support moving this to a vote in November. And I will also vote yes on the question on the election day. Uh, I think the building is old and in serious need of, of upgrade. The, you know, the boilers have fallen apart, you know, asbestos problems, PCBs, you name it. The school has, the springs popping out of the seats in the auditorium. It's got a whole plethora of, of problems that really need to be corrected. And I think this is the best approach. So I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Ungary.
I just want to say that I will be supporting to move this forward and I will also be voting yes. This is something that really needs to be done. I know a lot of teachers over at JFK and I know this is something we desperately need. So I hope everyone else will support it and come out and vote.
Councilor Crissati.
Yeah, I am, uh, in support of moving this to the ballot and I'm, I'm also a yes vote as being a retired veteran teacher at JFK and working there for 35 years. And, and this is the 50th year anniversary of JFK with no major renovations done to it. Well, I think the time has come. Uh, it should have passed last time and, um, I'm looking forward to it. For a lot of people to, you know, make their own decision on what they want to do in terms of a yes or a no vote. But, uh, you, you look at the boiler situation, that, that there in itself would make you vote yes on it. So, uh, I am definitely in support of both.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I'll support moving the question forward. I will also vote yes on the question. I think we have an obligation to provide, um, upgraded and better schools for our students. And I agree with everything that's been said that, you know, the better our school system is, the more appealing it is to our, um, community and people to come here and live. And I think one of the most important things that was said tonight was when Gallo came up and said, you know, when we're a business in Enfield and we're trying to bring new people into work, they're going to look at the, the immediate community and look at their school system. And I think we want them to look at it and say, yep, this is the community I would love to live in.
Thank you.
Councilor Arnone, thank you.
So if I may, even to either Chris or Legal, um, after we pass this resolution, it's important that the community knows that now we have to be careful on what we say from this point on legally. Could you give us a little schooling on what, what the dos and don'ts are after this is passed?
Well, number one, I'll say, just want to make, when, when discussion is done, you need to make a motion to approve the resolution, number one. And then you can vote on the resolution. Number two, there is going to be also here authorization to an explanatory text. And I'll defer to, um, the town attorney to give you the, the thumbnail sketch. But also we have bond counsel here who wrote this very simple to understand resolution. Because he's kind enough to still, and maybe he wants to come up and be able to participate and contribute.
No?
So you're welcome.
Yeah, I'd like him to answer because I think he's more the appropriate person.
He's been before us before.
Yes. Attorney Ritter.
No, thanks, Dan. We'll, we'll move on.
Attorney Ritter is our bond counsel.
Just name and title of.
Yep, Matt Ritter, attorney at Schimman and Goen in Hartford.
And so the question was, what can the council speak once this is, you know, passed tonight?
Yep, so you have a pending referendum after tonight. So you legally cannot use town funds to advocate for the approval or disapproval of the referendum question. You are all individual citizens, you can do whatever you want in your private lives. But things to watch out for that we find when there's complaints filed against this, it goes to State Election Enforcement Commission, using your town email, for example, right? Uh, you know, copying things in the town photocopier. Just be careful that if you guys have a, a presentation, for example, that was done a month ago that advocated for the referendum and you put it on the town website, you are using, albeit de minimis, town funds, but you are using town funds. So I think the rule of thumb is when you're out in the public on your own, you can do whatever you want. But town funds is where you're going to draw the ire of, of SIC. And the most common mistakes we'll make are emails, putting things in the town website and frankly flyers that you see copied in town, in town hall or something like that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Any other questions for bond counsel, why he's here? Go ahead.
If I could, Mayor, apologize. There, I did notice there is, if you go to the next resolution you're going to do, you were reading the warning of the referendum.
Yeah.
It looks like when there was a cut and paste from the resolution to submit the referendum and bonding resolution, the word school is twice in that question, I think, when you read it. So when we get to the next one, if we could just make a motion to clean up that typo in the warning of referendum and we'll delete that, uh, the cut and paste just. But if you look at the question, the first section, it is done right. I think the cut and paste just put the word school twice.
All right, so we'll make a motion in the next one, Debbie, move it.
Great, thanks.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Attorney Ritter.
Anyone else like to speak? For, against on the referendum? Yep.
I just wanted to add that I attended JFK when it was brand new. So I've seen the transition over the years. I'm not going to say what year I was there, but it does need the, the work.
Anyone else like to speak?
So I'm just going to go in closing here, um, since I was last year the one who voted against this. I feel I have to lay out, you know, my feelings on kind of just in some of the general conversation we had in the public hearing. I think it's interesting. So we've heard many different for, against, you know, and, uh, you know, again, I think this really started for us back when we started the, the facilities committee back in November or January, whenever we did it last year. Again, with everything in mind of getting a, a referendum in place for a school that is our middle school. And so I think what folks need to understand is when, really, if you think and look over the last year, we got hit with roughly $9 million in cuts from the state of Connecticut, roughly, give or take. And with all the, once we got, went through some of the mandates, it probably was a little higher. You know, we end up getting a little bit back, you know, at the, and near the end. But the town and the school system worked together and absorbed that major cut to a budget. We didn't send out, someone mentioned, we did not ever technically consider sending out a supplemental tax bill. We had meeting after meeting after meeting with our staff. And again, we, there was this open conversation about whether we take that money out of fund balance. We quickly said it made no sense to do that. Because if we took the money to pay, out of fund balance to pay expenses, we'd be doing exactly what the state is doing. That's why their bond rating is in the tank. Our goal is to maintain as much as we could with our services, not hit the schools. And again, try to establish our, our expense policy where, again, we're not going to get hit by the bonding ratings. And then we understood unfortunately, there was going to be a tax increase. You can't simply absorb $9 million roughly without having some sort of impact to some, some service and to your taxes. And so, and again, I, I'm a, I'm a conservative individual. I can't stand my tax, it kills me to look at my tax bill. However, the bottom line is we ate, we, we were able to do all that without sending out a supplemental tax bill. We did not take any money from fund balance. In fact, we're, we're going to be able to put a little bit back in. And that allowed us to maintain our bond rating, which is, I think, the third highest bond rating we can achieve when the rest of the state is struggling to maintain their bond rating. You can, I mean, there's no doubt about it, what's going on in Hartford is nerve, it's nerving. There's no, it affects Enfield, it affects every town. There's no other way around it. When they spend $500 million to bail out Hartford and Hartford's not going to, again, cut their expenses, it's, again, it's unnerving. And it does have impact, Enfield. But again, we did all that. Our finance director and our new town manager sat with Moody and Pours in, I think it was June or July, and, and answered those tough questions, reaffirmed their bond rating. And oh, by the way, the issuance of bonds is going to be at the lowest rate we can get. So we aren't just kicking the can to the next generation. We did our work upfront. We, we made some tough cuts and we still get some heat on some of those cuts. We probably could have made some more, maybe could argue we could have made less. But again, we made those decisions. We didn't touch the school system. We allowed them to fund, go through their process. And so as we look at the plan before us, so as you talk about fiscal responsibility, we've looked at all those different things. It's not just about a building. It's not just about PCBs. It's about everything that's going on in town. We would have liked to have already started Henry Barnard with the roof. So we started something through, again, our, our general fund where we're actually now going to start doing the roofs. The reason why we're delayed is because, again, we're, we're delayed for a good reason because we're trying to get that funding back from the state. So we're not just asking the local taxpayers to spend that all out of their money. We're actually trying to get a revolving fund of money where we can start looking at the other schools that need to be gone. And this facilities committee recognizes that. Board, council, professionals and some folks from the, from the community. So all, all the right pieces to do something well. And they meet every single Thursday. So we have a plan and every key, we have a plan in place. We've, we're trying to address the elementary schools. We're not doing them all at once. So 30 years down the road or 40 years, the next group of people who are sitting here are going to say, well, God, now we got to fix six roofs again. And so that has all been started, been worked on, started in November of last year by both Republicans, Democrats, board, council and professionals. So as we sit here tonight, then you ask the next, what are we going to do with the rest of the buildings? Great question and I think it's a fair question. Well, again, we put money in the budget where we're going to do a, again, everyone likes to talk about surveys and studies. Well, we are going to hire a, a professional organization to start making some recommendations of what buildings we're going to close. We can't keep all 27 buildings in town. It's as simple as that. We can't do it. So unfortunately, there's going to be some buildings that people love and have grown up and been here in their entire life. We may have to close that building. That's the next part of it. So we have a plan. Tough decisions are coming down the road. So again, when you talk about fiscal responsibility, we're addressing all that. And then I think someone mentioned, I, I hope I don't remember her name, Mrs. Olet from Betty Road. One of the main reasons I voted against the referendum last year is because it destroyed the hub. So my kids went through, and again, the other thing that kills me, JFK, I mean, so I'm old school. So I'm old school. I don't understand the, the fervor over buildings. I really don't. It's parents, teachers, that's a good education. You can do it in your backyard and you get a good education, in my opinion. So I never understood the fervor between Fermi and JFK, never understood it. Again, a building's a building, but our middle school is JFK. There's no other way around it and we need to fix it. I've been into those, those boilers, all three of them are down. We can't continue to run a prof, we're trying to be a professional organization. People talk about, we want to be number one in state in education. Yeah, it's going to take us a little time to get there, but we're going to get there. We will get there, there's no doubt about it. But the plan keeps the hub. And what's, why is that important? If you had a kid go through JFK and you volunteered some of your time over there, again, it separates the age groups in a very difficult age for kids. Again, we're spending our money on educating the kids. We're not spending our money on hall monitors, security and all this other stuff that we have to do in this day and age. We're spending on educating our kids because we use a team approach. And the other part with the problem with, when someone mentioned a pool, well, we tried adding a wing in the last, the last, uh, uh, design. We couldn't afford, we can't afford to staff it now. Yet we're going to add a bill, another wing that we can't afford. So this plan, again, is, yes, it's $84 million and I, and I understand, Jack, you're right. Because it's coming out of my other pocket of the state. But I think at some point, we got to get it done. And now we're at the point where, where the design of the building maintains the integrity of sixth, seventh and eighth grade team approach, which is working. You know what? My kids went through there and I can tell you right now, I'm not disappointed at all. My kid's going to college, my other kid's doing pretty well. And it's not because their father is smart. And I can tell you, the staff, the staff at JFK, I got more, more notes coming home from the staff than I have at any other system. And I'm not comparing, but I'm just saying, they're a motivated staff. They believe in this, this education that we're delivering at JFK. I've always believed in the building. I didn't believe in the project last year. And the cost, I'm sorry, was just, wasn't, wasn't affordable. The project makes sense this year. It keeps the integrity of the building. We have a plan to fix the other buildings. So we're not coming to you every year for a referendum, asking for another 40 million that Councilor Bosco is going to be reading into the record. So again, all that is being taken into place and we did not send out a supplemental tax bill. I mean, other, go read what other towns did. They sent out supplemental tax bill. Every single member, I'm not going to speak for anyone other myself, but every single member of this council went to the day, we are not sending out a supplemental tax bill. Because again, there's something fundamental about that that's wrong. It's wrong. And so we didn't do it and we made some hard cuts. So now here we are, because we did some of that, we're a year into advance. And again, I'll say this. So we get, our goal is to improve every single day and I, I agree, customer service is number one. But if you're at the graduation at Enfield High, and yes, I'm biased because my daughter graduated. graduated, however, the energy in that crowd, I don't care who you are, the energy in that crowd was fantastic. Something is happening, and you have to be blind not to see it. You have to be blind not to see it. And again, go to an event in town, go to an event, and when there's someone from the school doing it, every single one of them have a smile on their face. We all work for a living. You go to, you go to a job and you go and your boss is miserable, or your coworkers, all they do is complain, sorry, it wears on you. I don't care what you do for a living, it wears on you. So, something's going on, right? Something good's going on. And I'm going to stop talking, but I think, folks got to realize, this isn't about PCBs, it's not about boilers, it's not, again, it's, our population is changing in town. There's no other way around it, unfortunately. We're in it, we're in a process where we need to bring young families into town. I agree with Jack, we have a lot of houses that are unfortunately either been, some folks hit some tough times over the last 15 years. A lot of good people lost their jobs, again, good people. We didn't want to leave town. And you hear it all the time, I never wanted to leave town. Unfortunately, we went through a very tough stretch of an economy in the northern part. The southern part of state's trying to, actually just waking up to the fact there's a recession that's been going on. We've been dealing with it for 15 years. And oh by the way, we survived, and now we're at the point where we're, again, bringing in folks who feel the same energy that everyone who's been in this town their whole life, like myself and members of these council, but hey, we got to pivot, we got to change, just like we did in some other things. So the point on November, I support the referendum, so I don't, I don't differentiate between voting yes here and, I vote yes both ways. I was no last year, I'm yes this year, for all the things. And I encourage everyone in town to, I'm willing to answer any questions. You want to talk to me about it, come up to me and talk to me about it. You want to talk to other council, I'm sure they would, any member of the council would as well. Again, we have turned the corner, now it's time to put the pedal to the metal, and this is a big part of it. And again, look at that design. We, we, the last thing I'll say is this, we talk about when we do these things, we don't think about how we're going to staff it. You better believe we thought about how we're going to staff this building. That's why that other addition is gone, because again, we couldn't staff it to begin with. That's why unfortunately the pool has to go. And that's why we're investing our money into Fermi. These are the tough decisions that have to be made for the Fermi pool. These are the tough decisions that have to be made, and we're making them. And the next round will be coming out in, in the fall, or the early winter, with, again, the hardest working committee that this town has is the Facilities Committee, both Democrats and Republicans in Board, Ed, and Council. They're the, that's the next piece. So we have a plan, and we're putting stuff together, and I'm, there's going to be tough decisions, and now you're not going to agree with them all. But I don't want to hear anyone think that this is not, hey, we're just throwing a referendum back out there because it almost passed. No, this was done professionally, done over the last eight-month period, and I think the plan, if you look at it compared to last time, it is 100 times better, in my opinion. And so that's all I'm going to say, I'm voting yes. Thank you for my 15 minutes of fame, and I will move on. Anyone else? Yep?
Going along with the positive energy at JFK, I don't know if any of you were watching Channel 3 News last night, and the staff of JFK, there was a wonderful picture of the JFK staff with their new logo, JFK on there, their nice red T-shirts, the whole staff. So when the students exited the building, the whole staff was out there clapping them up, and, you know, this real nice thing, real nice gesture. And I have to thank the administration over at JFK for, for doing something like that, and then being recognized on Channel 3, which I thought was outstanding. So, going along with that note and being positive, yes, yes, to what we're talking about right now, and, uh, thanks to the mayor for his 15 minutes of fame, because I, I liked it, it was good. So thank you for that.
Retiring after this meeting too, by the way. So, any other further discussion? Motion, roll call please. No, I need a motion.
I got a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution as amended, and, you know, meaning waive the reading. Anyone have a motion? Counsel, second, by Counsel LeCollet, seconded by Counselor Ungar. Any discussion as the mo, as the motion amended? So we have to approve the amendment, right? So, all those in favor of the motion as amended?
You've got to break the amendment.
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one, okay, yeah.
This is as it is.
Got it. So, any discussion as the motion? All right, roll call please.
Mayor Ludwig.
I'm keeping you on your toes Suzanne, four.
Yes, sir. Did you say four?
Four, four, yes.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnony.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Uh, sorry about that Suzanne, make, so now a resolution, item I, resolution to submit the referendum for the appropriation bonding resolution for the reconstruction and renovation of JFK Middle School. I'm reading the warning, right? Warning referendum, November 6, 2018, is that correct, Counsel, I'm reading the warning? Yep. The electors and persons qualified to vote in a town event will hereby warn that the referendum vote will be held in conjunction with the elections on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, between hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. The polling places used by the town for the election shall be utilized by town electors for purposes of the referendum vote. Voters qualified to vote who are not electors shall vote at the Enfield Town Hall. The referendum vote shall be in, should be in an appropriation and bonding resolution approved by the Town Council on September 4, 2018, with the resolution shall be, which resolution shall be placed upon the voting tabulators under the following heading, question one, in quotes, "Shall the town of Enfield appropriate $84,373,294 for the reconstruction and renovation of the John F. Kennedy Middle School? School need amended and authorize the issuance of bonds, notes, and temporary notes in the amount not to exceed $27 million, with the balance funded by grants and other available funds? Item yes, uh, yes or no will be on the ballot. The full text of the Town Council resolution is on file and available for public inspection at Town Clerk's office. Absentee ballots will be available from the Town Clerk's office dated at Enfield, Connecticut, this day of September 2018." Suzanne Onicki, Town Clerk. By Deputy Mayor, I mean by Counselor Mueller. Seconded by Counselor Crisati. Do I have a motion to amend to remove the second school in the third sentence?
So motion to amend.
By Counselor Denny, seconded by Counselor Falk. So we are moving the second s, school word, so it'll say the John F. Kennedy Middle School, comma, and authorize will be the way, that'll be the, any discussion on that? On the amendment to remove school, all those in favor, by a show of hands. Those against, any abstentions? So we have 10 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion as amended? Hearing done, by roll call Suzanne.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnony.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item J, discussion resolution to authorize the town prepare explanatory text and additional explanatory materials for the referendum question. Town of Enfield explanatory text, November 6, 2018 referendum vote. I apologize if I'm saying the same, but this is important. Shall, again, in quotes, "Shall the town of Enfield appropriate $84,373,294 for the reconstruction and renovation of the J.F. John F. Kennedy Middle School and authorize the issuance of bonds, notes, or temporary notes in an amount not to exceed $27 million, with the balance funded by grants and other available funds?" Again, the question, the answer, the words yes and no will be on the ballot. A resolution adopted by the Enfield Town Council, a meeting held on September 4, 2018, shall be submitted to a referendum vote for the voting tabul, tabulators or paper ballots by the town electors and qualified voters for approval or disapproval, in conjunction with the election to be held Tuesday, November 6, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 AM, 8:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. If approved, the resolution presented under the ballot heading above will appropriate $84,373,294, excuse me, for the costs related to the reconstruction and renovation of John F. Kennedy Middle School, substantially in accordance with the grant application for JFK Middle School additions and renovations dated June 27, 2018. In parentheses, the grant application, the grant application states that preliminary opinions of probable cost estimate the total cost of the project, including all construction and soft costs, $84,373,294, with this, with an estimated $57,380,710, or roughly 68% of those costs being reimbursed to the town by the state of Connecticut, leaving the town's total share of $26,992,584. The resolution provides that the town will finance the $84,373,294 appropriation by: one, issuing the town's bonds or notes in the amount not to exceed $27 million; two, using any federal, state, or other grants in aid, or any funds received for the project; three, using monies available in the unappropriated and unaccombrated general fund cash balance, in parentheses, in accordance with the procedures in Chapter 6, Section 8G of the Town Charter; and four, using monies available from other sources that determined by the resolution of the Town Council. The full text of the Town Council resolution is on file, available for public inspection at the Town Clerk's office. The polling places used by the town for the election shall be utilized by town electors for purposes of the referendum vote. Voters qualified to vote who are not electors shall vote at the Enfield Town Hall. Absentee ballots will be available from the Town Clerk's office. So moved. By Counselor Nohn, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Any discussion on the resolution as read? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnony.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item K, resolution amending the EMS captain job description. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does hereby amend the classification plan to amend the job description for the position of EMS captain, submitted on August 29, 2018 by Steve Belinda, Director of Human Resources. We have a motion to approve. So moved. By Counselor Falk. By Counselor Sikala. Like our new chief to come up? Any, we'll give her the floor, all right?
Sure.
So this just allows us really one word into the qualification.
I think you have to put the mic on, Erin.
Just your name and title, your title now.
Oh, Erin Rigott, Chief. So we opened the captain's position up for applications and resumes. We got seven applications, and six of them didn't meet the job qualifications. So, we would like to modify the job qualifications to add a combination of work experience and education, and not just one and both, so.
Thank you. Any questions for our new chief?
No, no questions, but a comment, in that, you know, we're going through the same thing, well, we did, with the town manager, the wording and what have you, as far as requirements, so I could fully appreciate what you're going through, and I, I support what you're requesting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, they're taking it easy on you tonight.
I know, I like it.
Let's bring it back next week, we're going to have some tough questions.
All right, all right.
Roll call please.
Good.
Thank you. Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnony.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item L, resolution adopting a Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development job description. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the new job description for the position of Deputy Director of Economic and Development, and Community Development, made it on August 22, 2018 by Steve Belinda, Human Resources Director. Resolved by Counsel Mueller, seconded by Counselor Falk. Lori's not here, I don't know if there's anything.
No, this is in accordance with her new reorg plan, it's included in your chart and explanation, and she worked it out with Steve Belinda, and I asked you to adopt it.
Cool. Hearing no comments, roll call please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnony.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Item M, M under miscellaneous, resolution amen, excuse me, item M under, M as in Mike, under resolution, under miscellaneous resolution amending the health aide job description. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does amend the classification plan to amend the job description for the position of health aide for the Adult Day Center, submitted on 9/4/18 by Don Homer Bouthier, Director of Social Services. By Counsel Mueller. Seconded by Counselor Nohn.
This is in accordance with the reorg that she had submitted, and is in keeping with us updating all of our job descriptions to really reflect what people are now doing. She's here in case there are any questions, but I think it's self-explanatory, this and the next two.
Okay, you're good? Okay. Any questions? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnony.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item N, resolution amending the Executive Director of Daycare job position. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does hereby amend the job description for the position of Executive Director of Daycare, submitted on 8/22/2018 by Don Homer Bouthier, Director of Social Services. By Counsel Mueller, seconded by Counselor Falk. Again, anything, this is just a reorg? I don't, Don, anything, no? Any questions from anyone? Again, you're off the hook, roll call please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnone.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item O, under miscellaneous, resolution amending the recreation aide job description. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does hereby amend the job description for the position of recreational aide, submitted on August 23, 2018, by Don Homer Boothier, Director of Social Services. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Arnon. Any discussion, again, further reorg? Yep, correct. You luck out. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Arnone.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you for hanging in there all night. Thank you. Yeah, okay, good. Item P, see, you guys spoke too soon. Resolution authorizing the acting town manager enter an agreement with N-Hunger, Connecticut. Resolve that the acting town manager or designee is authorized to sign a non-financial partnership agreement subject to review and approval by the town attorney's office and a name and a behalf of the town of Enfield with N-Hunger, Connecticut, and the Connecticut Department of Social Services, and to fix the corporate seal, submitted on IRS 23, 2018, by Don Homer Boothier, Director of Social Services. By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Crisati. Don, maybe it's just some, I was curious to just show folks what the N-Hunger, Connecticut is about.
I also just wanna say that moments ago, this was correct, because it's acting town manager.
Yeah, I know, I saw that.
So do we need to fix that? Can we amend the resolution, or is it too late?
Sure.
I'm asking.
The town attorney mentioned that as well, so.
We will amend it. So you wanna give background before I make the amendment?
Oh, sure.
On N-Hunger?
So N-Hunger, Connecticut is a statewide organization that works with the Department of Social Services, Food Share, and other food entities across the state to make sure that everybody who's eligible can qualify for SNAP assistance and other programs like that. What they've found lately is that there is a underrepresentation of very young children and older folks receiving SNAP benefits. And so what we'd like to be able to do is work with N-Hunger, Connecticut, and the State Department of Social Services to help generate some federal revenue by having them offset the work that we already do in social services, making referrals for SNAP and other programs like that. Doesn't cost us anything, expands the services available to the town. So it's kind of a win-win.
So how do we let people know if we get the grant, who's available and who's not?
So one of the things we'll do is set up a schedule for the N-Hunger, Connecticut folks to come in, and they can co-locate in any of the town buildings that we can make arrangements for, and they'll be eligible to take applications directly on behalf of the residents.
We, could we just, could we make sure we can publicize that if that happens?